So first, we have our public hearing for the updated 2021 district-wide safety plan. Dr. Harrison.
So, good evening, everyone. This year, the district filed its normal process and the process which is outlined by the state of New York in having the appropriate hearings and approval of its annual revisions or updates to the district-wide safety plan. This plan is very generic in nature because, as you can imagine, the details within our plan are confidential to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. Earlier this year, the state issued different recommendations or requirements for school district to be able to plan for such things as pandemics, looking at different communicable diseases and precautions that we need to take in that front. So I'm going to defer to Carol if you could share a few of the highlights of the types of additions that were made to our plan and the process that we went to communicate this to the school community. Carol?
Certainly. As you just mentioned, the requirement this year was to add, basically, some protocols around public health emergencies similar to what we're in and, in a sense, memorialize some of the planning that we've already been doing for this year in case there's a future event like this. Much of it was covered in our reopening plan, so really, we had to just kind of pull from that document. We didn't really have to reinvent much here. We just had to put it in the right format to meet the requirements of the state. And the key things were identifying essential workers, making sure we had PBE, personally protective equipment, planning to, you know, protect our individuals, looking at our visitor manager, how we would restrict visitors, and some basic key events like that. So really, all of the work had been pretty much done, and so it was really just a matter of putting it in the right format. What we did was, we posted on our website in, I think, as early as December now, the changes we were making to the plan and also the actual revised plan. The safety committee was involved with making these revisions, so they got to see everything in advance. And then, and we've also reviewed that again in one of our safety team meetings today. We just reviewed it again just to make sure everybody was fine with it. It was put out in public comment. I know that Dr. Harrison put it out in the community email at one point to say, "Go look at our website." So we've done the publication as well. So we've met all the requirements. It's not due until, physically due until April 1st to be uploaded to the state, but when I get this done, it was already, for the most part, already in progress anyway. So that's essentially what it is. The requirement tonight is to have the final public hearing in case anyone wants to speak up against the changes or have any changes or modifications. And then later in the agenda, we have the board adopting the revised plan.
Right. So, Brian, now would be the opportunity for any members of the public to comment on the plan. And if there are none, then the board would adopt it later in the meeting.
So as Dr. Harrison said, if there's anyone in the public that has a comment on just the safety plan, you could do so now. As a reminder, for those who haven't been attending our meetings, the procedure to make a comment is to put your name and address in the Q and A function in Zoom, and then you'll be recognized to speak. So if anyone has anything on the safety plan, go ahead. Otherwise, we'll close the hearing on this, return to our regular meeting. And I know there's a lot of people in the audience who are presumably here to comment on the athletics portion of our agenda. There'll be the opportunity to do so later as part of that discussion. So seeing no questions on the safety plan, if we can close the public hearing and return to our regular meeting. Does that need to be voted on, or?
It's on the actual agenda itself.
Okay. So now, if I can have a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Dr. Harrison, over to you for district updates.
So, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many folks joining us tonight and especially our friends in the athletic community. Tonight's meeting features a number of very important topics, so I want to keep my remarks very focused at this point in time. As everyone knows, we're going to be joined by our Fine Athletic Director this evening, who is going to join me for a presentation and then a discussion related to high-risk athletics. So we will come to that. Then, following that point in time, we are going to launch the 2021-22 budget process. Ms. Stein and I will provide an overview of the fiscal outlook or the fiscal landscape for this year and then introduce the operations component of the budget. And then, finally, this evening, we will present the 2021-22 district calendar. That being said, you know, we do have a focus on our student athletes this evening, but I don't want anyone to think that we're not thinking about all of our students and the desire and need for them to be in school and to do so in person. We recognize that students learn best when they're here in our school buildings. We recognize that our students need to have the social interaction with their peers and their teachers. And we know that a return to regular schooling, and that is 100% in-person schooling, will serve our students both socially, emotionally, and academically well. That being said, this is an initiative that I'm beginning to launch here in our school district in looking at how we can explore increasing student attendance and doing so this spring and not waiting for the fall to do that. In doing so, I'm going to call our reopening committee back together. That will be initially the steering committee, and we will review the opportunities that are before us. But certain things that I think are critical will be outlined in the athletics presentation as well. But I think it's essential for us all to keep in mind that for the health and safety of our entire school community, it's of critical importance that our faculty and staff receive their vaccines, that we have unfettered access to surveillance testing in our schools so we can monitor the health and well-being of our school community and that we can make sure that we have all the guidance necessary from the Department of Health to ensure the safety of our students and staff. So this is a process that I am outlining and calling the committee back together immediately following break. And from that process, I will be providing the community with updates regarding our work, the questions that we are struggling with, the progress that we are making. And then ultimately, it'll result in a recommendation to the Board of Education as to whether we can increase student attendance, what that may look like, and what other processes we may need to put in place. So I want to assure the school community that this is a top priority for me, the Board of Education, and the school district. And we're not simply focused on athletics, despite how important we know they are to our students and their physical, emotional well-being. On a different topic, I know that everyone is looking forward to winter break, which is just around the corner as we conclude this week. Reminders that I've given with every break along the way, that I hope you stay local. I hope that you continue to follow all the COVID guidance that New York State has issued and that the reminders we continue to provide from a school district standpoint. My advice is not to travel, not to vacation, not to congregate in large groups. And if you do happen to travel, you need to be mindful of all the New York State travel requirements, whether that is to quarantine upon return or to participate in the testing protocol, which requires one, if you travel to another state, for example, to have testing, a PCR test performed within three days before leaving that state. And then, when you return to New York, to quarantine for four days and then have a PCR test performed in New York State. If, in fact, you receive two negative tests, you would need to present those tests to the school nurse. And at that point in time, your child could be cleared to return to school. If you do not participate in that testing protocol, you'll have to quarantine for 10 days. Also, over break, if someone tests positive for COVID-19, and unfortunately, we know it'll happen, but we hope it doesn't happen to too many folks, or if you are designated as a close contact of someone that has tested positive for COVID-19, just like with the holiday recess, I would ask that you please report this on a Google form that is linked from the district website. It was linked from my newsletter on Saturday, and each of the schools will send it out again this week as a reminder. Please report that information. We will check in on it periodically throughout break, and then we will be in communication with you about the appropriate next steps for your child. And then, finally, before we pivot into all the important topics that we have to talk about this evening, I don't want to overlook some of the critical work that is happening in our school district this week. You know, when we look to the complicated weather today, and I make the best decisions that I can. I don't have a degree in epidemiology, although I feel like I'm being tested from time to time. But I am also not a meteorologist, and today, we made the best decision that we could with the information available to us regarding the weather. Unlike the two prior weeks, we are unable to make modifications to our school week by flipping the Tuesday and Wednesday schedule because of numerous events that are planned and scheduled in the schools or across the district tomorrow that have to occur that would not be able to be rescheduled. That said, one of those critically important events is the diversity initiative where we have our culturally responsive, sustainable education lead learner team participating in its second half-day learning session with NYU. And then, on this Friday, each school is going to participate in building-level workshops that will focus on this critical subject matter as well. So with that in mind, I want to thank all of our parents and our students for their continued flexibility and understanding. In doing so, you are supporting this work. You're supporting the work that is going to help bring about the necessary change in our school community. And we certainly do not want to lose momentum or our focus. So it is critical that we move forward with this work this week. And I know my colleagues and I look forward to the learning that will take place across the district, both tomorrow afternoon and all day on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we'll move on to committee reports, and I'll start with the B and G committee. So we spent the last two meetings talking about the Phase 2 projects and looking at the 60% designs, providing feedback to our professional partners. And we're at the point now where those designs are going to be cost estimated. So hopefully, by mid-March or so, we should have those estimates. There'll be a B and G meeting towards the end of March, where we'll do further work on that with the goal of providing an update in the spring once we have that process further along and know where we are from a budget standpoint on Phase 2 and look at it holistically with our Phase 1 contracts that we've approved so we can have a discussion about where we are at that point in time, recognizing that it will still evolve as both the Phase 1 work is done over the summer and completed, and we see where that comes in. And also, obviously, the Phase 2 work will still have to be bid next fall before we know the actual price on that. I will say, the, you know, estimates and the bids were fairly in sync this time around. So hopefully, we'll have a similar alignment around that. And just before we move on to other committees, just a note on the agenda. So there is a community comment period scheduled after our updates. We will, however, also provide for comments after the discussion around athletics and before the vote on the resolution. So if anyone, just as our rules have been, if you look to make a comment during 7.1 before the presentation, we'll wait for others who have not had a chance to comment after the presentation before you may have a chance to comment again. So I just want people to be mindful of that, but you're welcome to make a comment before the presentation or after. You may not have the opportunity to speak in both periods. So I will say, at this point, though, if there's anyone who wants to make a comment before the presentation, you can go ahead and put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom now, and you'll be recognized during 7.1. Otherwise, we'll proceed with the discussion in 8.1 and then also have an opportunity for comments after that. So with that, if there's someone from the Communications Committee who could provide an update on... Beth, go ahead.
So essentially, for Communications Committee, we focused on advocacy involving budget issues with the state, which are a very important topic at this time. We, including Dr. Harrison, President Friedman, and I will be sitting and attending a various number of panels involving these budget issues, including our Assembly people and our state senators. And the Communications Committee, at this point, is working on a draft letter, which we would like to share with the community and perhaps with our neighboring districts to have a cooperative effort to influence the budget process.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee?
So the Curriculum Committee, we updated you the last time, and there's a meeting that was supposed to take place tomorrow, but we're postponing that till the 23rd. So the next Curriculum Committee meeting will take place on the 23rd. And while I'm here, just the Village of Irvington update real quick.
Go ahead.
Just a very, very quick piece. The Village had a meeting the other night. They're in the midst of their budget season as well. They wanted us to relay to you, Dr. Harrison, with various departments presenting their proposed budgets over the course of the next several work sessions. And of course, the consideration of the North Broadway rezoning continues with input from all sources from all over the place. And they wanted to make sure that, please be assured that we are considering school capacity as we deliberate. That's the update from the Village.
Thank you. Policy?
Yes. We continued looking at the 500 series, the 5,000 series. We looked at some new policies put out, which included the library material section and the diversity section in relation to our school and to the libraries. We worked on language in the attendance section of the policy and changes due to remote learning. And we're going to continue our discussion at the next meeting. Beth, did I hear anything out?
On the liaison assignments, do we have anyone who has any updates from their liaison assignments? So I'll just briefly talk about the Strategic Partnership Council, which had our quarterly meeting at the end of January and talked about some of the things that Dr. Harrison mentioned about looking towards increased participation in school, but also got a chance to hear from all of our partners about their activities and the fundraising efforts that they're going to be undertaking during the rest of the year. And obviously, how they've reimagined many of those activities during COVID. So stay tuned for announcements from, in particular, the IAF and the PTSA about their fundraising activities as they raise money to support so many wonderful efforts in the district.
I just, yeah, I just add that there was an IAF meeting on the 3rd, which I attended and had extension of the dialogue with our fine partners at the IAF and updated them all the work. And obviously, they're busy engaging in their plans for this school year and to support the school district, our students and staff through various creative new fundraising efforts. This morning, there was also a community advisory board meeting, which was excellent. We engaged our student leaders in a challenge across the district where they were to watch particular Super Bowl commercials and look for certain types of takeaways. So there was a workshop today where we broke into five different groups and analyzed two particular commercials. One was a Bud Light commercial where that had a number of celebrities in it and the superhero-type interaction. And then, there was another commercial that we reviewed, which was a Toyota commercial that was a really touching story about an adopted young woman that was born without legs and then ultimately became a Paralympian and her story around that. And the students analyzed the particular commercials, thinking about the messages that were embedded in those commercials and thinking about the alcohol messages and the really ethical, feel-good message that was uplifting in the Toyota commercial. And as always, our students really impressed us with their insight in the conversation. And it was just incredible dialogue. I want to give kudos to the director at IAS Cab, Lisa Tominey, and our chairperson at Cab, Chris Raymond, for doing a great job in putting that together today. As I said, our students really impressed us, they always do.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we'll now move on to our first community comment period. And with that, Jay, if you could promote Robert Grados, 5 Castle Road. First time, long time. Go ahead, Bob.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. I just wanted to make a few comments tonight on behalf of Irvington Youth Lacrosse. I'm the current president of Irvington Youth Lacrosse. And I know that the board is going to consider this evening whether to permit, quote-unquote, "at-risk" sports to proceed this spring. First off, I want to really commend the board and the administration for the effort in this last year to keep our children engaged. I could tell you that mine have been, and I want to thank everybody for that. In looking at the spring season, Irvington Youth Lacrosse has decided, and we've notified parents in town, that we will try, being the key word, try to proceed with the season. Just since we've made that decision as of about four or five days ago, the vast majority of children and parents who have played with us in the past have decided that, notwithstanding the COVID epidemic, that they will attempt to play for this season. As the board and the administration knows, Irvington Youth Lacrosse has always been a partner with the district in attempting to help train the children until such time in lacrosse that they graduate until modified and varsity sports. Just for background, we at Irvington Youth Lacrosse have decided that, especially considering the fact that the season, of course, both at the high school, middle school, throughout, you know, and ours was was canceled last year because of the pandemic. We made the decision that it is in the best interest of the kids that if we can have a season this year, whether it's abridged, whether it's, you know, whether we have to change because of COVID regulations, whether we have to limit games or limit the size of games or limit the amount of players that we owe it to the kids to do everything we can to attempt to have the season. I'm not Nostradamus. I don't know what's going to happen in the next few months. But I would urge the board to approve tonight going forward with spring sports because if you don't, of course, it's a trickle-down effect. If you don't, then we don't. So I would ask you to make the decision as well. We don't, none of us are Nostradamus. We don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic over the next few months. But I would just say that we urge the district to make a positive decision this evening and at least give the kids a chance to play. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob, for your comments. Next, we have Sarah Laboon, 44, Northbrook Lane in Irvington. Jay, if you could promote Ms. Laboon, please.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, hi. So on behalf of Rich and me, I just wanted to say, I too wanted to thank the board so much and the administration and Chris Harrison and so many people that have worked incredibly hard over these last few months. I can't imagine what their days and nights were like trying to figure out how to make this work. And I think that overall, there have been bumps along the way, but overall, it's really been an amazing success that we are now finding ourselves in February and that our schools are still managing and the kids are still in person two days a week and still learning. And I just wanted to just give a big thank you to the countless people who are behind that success. And it really is a success when I tell people, "I'm from Irvington," and they say, "Oh, your schools are still open, aren't they?" I think I get comments like that. So I think that it's, you guys have done an amazing job. But that being said, I also want to agree with Mr. Grados and say how important I think sports are to the kids. I have daughters who play both high-risk and low-risk sports. But I really do think that in this trying time for all of us, it is just imperative for them to have something outside of just school, even if that's massed school in person or at home, being online, that it just is, it's really important for them psychologically, emotionally, in terms of growth, in terms of their being with friends they wouldn't normally see in different grades if they're playing varsity sports and they have, you know, different grades participating. And I really do believe and trust that at this juncture, after so much time, after almost a year, that we know now that we have to take it seriously. We are not in a place where we think, "Oh, masks or no masks, no big deal." We recognize, I think, as both parents, I hope, and educators and coaches, how important it is to take the guidelines seriously, to make sure the kids are following the guidelines, to teach them how important it is to follow rules of a game in the same way you follow rules on the court, off the court. You have to do that if you're going to participate and going to have that opportunity. So I just think it's extremely important for them, if we can do it safely, and I think we can. I have friends who live in other parts of the country whose kids play basketball, for example. This entire season, they played masks, they practiced in masks, and it worked. And people didn't get sick, and they did not hang out together in locker rooms unmasked and things like that. And they were able to make it work in the same way we've been able to make our schools work and stay open with distancing and with masks. So I'll just tell a very, very brief little story about my middle daughter, Emma Line, who asked me in her beginning of her freshman year to play field hockey. And I said, "You know, I don't, I don't think we need to play field hockey. That's just too much. You're starting school. It's a freshman year, first year of high school. It's just, let's focus on, you know, just focus on your studies." And she came back a couple minutes, a couple days later and said, "You know, Mom, I really want to play field hockey." And I was like, "All right, you know, go right ahead if you think you want to." You know, "But you got to keep up with your schoolwork," that kind of conversation. And it was literally a completely life-altering experience for her because she sat inside three days a week on her computer. But then, at 3:30, she got to put on her mask and grab her cleats and go run around outside and be with her friends and be with a new coach and play with people she didn't know before, upperclassmen she didn't know. And it was just, it was so clearly just this invigorating kind of, you know, amazing, life-giving experience for her to be able to do that. And I thought, you know, if they hadn't allowed, I mean, I know that that's different, obviously, than basketball, but we were also still figuring it out and wearing masks, running up and down a field. And it really was a huge benefit to her to have that aspect of school and socialization and, you know, being an athletic person during the day, after a long day of sitting around on a computer. So that's basically what I want to say, but just that I think as a parent, I would certainly make sure that my child takes it as seriously as I would and as I know Coach Mar would for basketball. And I just wanted to say that I really hope that they're allowed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Leila Zuckerman, 42, Eiler Lane in Irvington. Jay, if you could promote Ms. Zuckerman, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Leila Zuckerman, and I'm a senior at Irvington High School and a captain for the Irvington varsity volleyball team. Volleyball is a passion of mine like no other, and my teammates and I have relied heavily on the emotional support of each other during this pandemic. And we all feel that it is imperative for us to have any type of season we can. This global pandemic has brought on a lot of emotional and mental trouble for everyone, in particular, Lee High School students and seniors. We are all here to fight for our right to play and do the thing we love. I don't just speak for volleyball when I say that having a season is something that we have all yearn for. for, and without it, we will all be heartbroken. Volleyball is a sport that can come with risk even before the pandemic. We are asking if you can please consider giving us a chance to have a senior year sports season. We all want this so badly that regardless of the guidelines or rules, we will follow them and take anything we can. We love what we do and wouldn't be who we are without these sports. If you consider taking into account the senior nights and games that all of us will miss out on if we don't have our season, I hope you see our point. We have lost enough from this pandemic, and I hope that you can have at least, and I hope that we can have at least one chance of normalcy and closure to our senior year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tara Fitzpatrick. If you could, please provide your address and Jay, if you could promote Ms. Fitzpatrick, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, you need my, I'm sorry, you need my street address?
Yes, your home address, please.
Sure, 22 Barney Park, Irvington.
Great, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I thank everybody who is present at the meeting and for all your time, Brian Friedman, Dr. Harrison. I also want to thank the A.D., John Bonavano, and our trainer, athletic trainer, Hannah Gross. Congrats to the district also for hiring these two people. I think they're really outstanding at their jobs. And I think that's an important part of what we should all consider. I know firsthand Hannah, my daughter, was a three-sport athlete at Irvington two years ago, Mia Mascone. And Hannah is an amazing professional. She's incredibly serious and dedicated about her job and what she does in keeping our children safe. She's super educated and always very thorough with everything she does for all the sports, for all of the athletes that she takes care of. And she's, should be trusted in this process, that, you know, out there, on the fields, on the courts, having Hannah Gross with us is a huge plus and asset that we should rely on and trust. The same with John Bonavano. I've only been able to work with him briefly in this first year of of him being here, but he is super organized and prepared. He seems really competent and very well-equipped to handle this. He's he's in touch with his peers. I know he's talking to other A.D.s and he's getting information and feedback, and he's on the pulse of what's going on. He knows how to make this work, and I feel like we should also really think about the people we've hired to trust and take care of these things. You know, it's funny because we talk about teamwork, and I think this is teamwork. You got to trust your team. And I think we're so lucky to have both John and Hannah in our in our backcourt because those guys really know what they're doing, and I think that's an important thing to remember, as this is going to take a lot of people to organize. And I think when we say we're in, whether or not we are going to make this happen, we know many, many schools around us have solved this problem. I think it's close to 70 schools in this area already that have worked really hard to make this work for their student athletes. I I want us to be able to solve this problem for our kids as well. To date, Irvington, you know, has taken the stance that these these high-risk sports are not safe, but it seems with the team in place that we have and the information that everybody else, all 70-plus schools have, this is a solvable problem, and I think we should step up and and make this happen for our hard-working kids. You know, I want to talk a little bit about team sports.
So Ms. Patrick, yeah, we try to allow everyone about three minutes. So you've gotten past that, but I do want, if you have a final point to make, you can go ahead and make it before we move on.
Well, I did not know that ahead of time, so thank you for letting me know that now. But all right, well, team sports is about ethics. We're going to teach our kids ethics, accountability, how to fall and get back up, humility, tolerance, time management, delayed gratification, socialization, diversity, and setting goals. I mean, I think if we have the best interest, everybody here on this phone call has the best interest of our kids at heart. So we, I think we have a chance to move and to solve this problem for our athletes. And I hope everybody reconsiders what they put into it and the safety protocols that 98% of the schools have been able to solve for. And I think we are up to the task, and I think that our children deserve our effort to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Harrison, turn it over to you and Mr. Bonavano for our presentation.
Could you just bear with me a moment, folks? So Jay, if you could please promote Mr. Bonavano, please. And John, say hi when you're there.
Hello?
Hi, John. Very good. So good evening once again, everyone, and I would like to welcome our fine athletics director, John Bonavano, who we just heard so many nice comments about. And, you know, I really want to frame this conversation that we're going to have this evening, because I want to make sure we're all working from the same place. And I really appreciate the the comments that were made from our community members, all folks who I know well and have tremendous respect for, and I appreciate the supportive words that you shared, and that which you do for our school district and our school community on a regular basis. When we think about where we are today, I want to be sure that we're all working from the same foundation. When we think about this, I've I've heard words used about that the school board of the district has not authorized, or you're asking us to reconsider the authorization of high-risk sports. I do need to clarify that no decision has ever been made by the Board of Education or the administration not to host these sports or not to facilitate them. So high-risk sports were put on hold by the governor's office, by the Department of Health, going back about two and a half weeks ago. On a Friday afternoon presser, the governor indicated that he was giving his approval for high-risk sports to begin. But for that decision to be made, he was delegating authority to local boards of health, which would be the county departments of health, to be able to give consent based upon the information available to them in their particular counties as to how you should proceed locally. While all this was happening in the background, Section One, the State Athletic Association, and other state-related organizations were doing their diligence, I have to tell you, the accolades that went out to John and Hannah and others, they've been working behind the scenes preparing for this opportunity. So what happened is that the governor gave approval, but really passed the responsibility to the county Department of Health. The county Department of Health, then taking guidance that was coming forth from the State Department of Health, then wrestled with this situation. They met with a small group of superintendents and athletic directors. They met with all of the superintendents in the county to inform their planning. They collected data from us related to student participation, and the types of challenges that we had related to facilities and the like. And then they formulated their own guidance. That guidance then provided another set of standards that has to be met that John will explain on a local level. But then ultimately, what happened, we had the governor take it, say, yeah, you can do it, pass the responsibility to the county. The county said, yeah, you can do it. And they passed that responsibility right back to every single boardroom like this across the state of New York. So Irvington Board of Ed has been supportive of our students. The Irvington administration has been supportive of our students and our athletics. That guidance just came out from the Department of Health on Thursday and Friday. The first draft on Thursday, revised Thursday evening, sent out to districts on Friday. I conveyed that information, sent copies of all that documentation to our Board of Education. We consulted with legal counsel. We made the plans to get where we are today. So I want to be really clear, we're here for our kids today. We're here to ensure that we can provide healthy and safe experiences in whatever way we want to look at that. But this is the first discussion we're having about high-risk sports in the Irvington School District. John is going to introduce this timeline to you, talk about the necessities around the guidance, talk about some of our local protocols, because I can tell you when it comes to health and safety in the Irvington schools, whether there's COVID care in general or our athletic program, we go above and beyond. We do more than you're going to see in almost every other school district, and they all do a great job, too. I'm just that proud of what we do, whether it is our teachers, our administrators, our coaches, nurses. We're in a great position, but we wouldn't be where we are without the aforementioned teamwork. So that said, I would like to welcome John to join us, to walk us through this timeline of the work that that has kind of landed in our lap and opportunities that we're excited about, but very difficult, important decisions that have to be made in the room tonight. So John, I'll defer to you and just let me know when you want me to advance slides.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison. You know, the hot, it's been a hot topic regarding high-risk sports since the fall, when football and volleyball were moved to separate seasons. And, you know, since that time, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association has been advocating, along with the local sections, and awaiting the governor to make a determination regarding the status of high-risk sports. This timeline that you see here kind of goes through how this process has unfolded. The original determination by the governor was supposed to be made on December 31st. And as you could see in this slide, the governor did not actually approve high-risk sports until January 22nd. And with that approval, there was a lot of misunderstanding because, you know, I saw on social media immediately, you know, people were very excited, but he he punted, you know, to the local Department of Health for their approval. Soon after that, you know, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association had released Return to Interscholastic Athletics for High-Risk Sports. This document contains all of the guidance that we need from the New York State Department of Health in order to ensure that we're following proper protocols to maintain safety for our student athletes, coaches, and everyone involved with with our sports programs. It wasn't until January 30th then that the section, Section One confirmed the Westchester Department of Health did approve, you know, the February 1st start date for high-risk sports, and with the caveat that there would be further information coming from the Westchester Department of Health. So it wasn't until February 2nd then that they did release, you know, the the return to sports recommendation with best practices and a memorandum that we, you know, will discuss this evening regarding how we are, make sure that we could have a safe return to high-risk sports. And then this document was actually updated on February 3rd. That brings us to tonight, the local determination regarding the the start of high-risk sports. Dr. Harrison, if you could switch the slide. So the memorandum that was sent out on February 3rd from the Commissioner of Westchester Department of Health, Shirley D. Amler, requires each district to look to provide high-risk sports by following certain protocols. Each player must have a physical in accordance with New York State Department of Health guidance. Now, this was a change from the February 2nd guidance, but this allows basically all student athletes, there was a waiver that was granted this fall for all athletes who were unable to get an updated medical exam. So the state had allowed, back in September, student athletes to utilize valid medical exams from 2018, 19, or 1920. The Department of Health did extend that through the the end of this year. So student athletes who are unable to obtain a medical exam from a doctor would still be eligible to participate. This memorandum also discussed that individuals with previous COVID-19 diagnosis, subsequent to their physical, must have an in-person medical exam in clearance by a doctor prior to participation in scholastic athletics. We were ahead of the curve here. We had started implementing this based off of what our medical team had recommended, including Hannah Gross. And I would love to echo with with Ms. Fitzpatrick in what she said about Hannah Gross. She's a tremendous asset and brought this to the forefront to ensure that our student athletes were safe in their return back to sports. Student athletes and parents must give their informed written consent for participation in high-risk sports during the pandemic, as well as a code of conduct that's that would be approved by the school board or superintendent. So these are documents that would go out to all of our student athletes' families and be required in order for us to allow them to participate. And again, this is coming from the Westchester Department of Health now. The student, the school district must retain all of the original code of conduct forms signed, whether it's computer-based or we keep the hard copies with us, and we would have to furnish that if the county had asked for those copies. Dr. Harrison, you could switch. Can you hear me?
Yep, I, did you see, I advanced the slide, John.
Okay. The the school district must have a hierarchy of oversight as well. So, you know, the the Department of Health is saying that coaches should not have the sole responsibility of controlling all established regulations and consequences, and must appoint a athletic COVID coordinator. With my discussions with Dr. Harrison today, I, you know, assume would be me as their direct supervisor to oversee and make sure, you know, that I would be handling all, any contact tracing that would that would be needed, you know, from the athletic standpoint. Schools may establish testing protocols, which we heard a little bit about earlier, mandatory or random for athletic teams, and if they choose to do so. We also must provide a school board resolution, and that's why we're here tonight, or written consent from the school superintendent, you know, which sports would be permitted to play and which grades will be permitted to play each sport. So when we talk about health and safety plans, you know, I'm going to go back to basically our original presentation that we did earlier this year and the the hard work that the entire athletic team put together, coaches, our medical, you know, staff, administrators, and how we could make sure, you know, that our top priority is always first and foremost to provide the safest possible entry at interscholastic athletics for our student athletes, coaches, support staff, and spectators. Within this, we're going to follow the standards and guidelines provided by the Center of Disease Control, the New York State Department of Health, and the local health departments, and the New York State Department. Every single piece of our plan that we developed this year is predicated on the information that was given to us by these different entities. We're also coordinating with best practices established by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association and the Section One COVID-19 Task Force. And throughout this entire process, we've been operating in consultation with their district's medical director to ensure that the proper measures are being considered with respect to our school community. As I mentioned before, the health and safety of everyone involved is, you know, paramount. How we go about doing this, you know, we establish goals. The following goals were meant to provide safe and enjoyable playing environment for all. And basically, we established the precautions based on the aforementioned guidance. We look to educate all involved parties on our protocols, safely introduce student athletes to physical activity, safely return to interscholastic competitions, and provide social, emotional support during this difficult time. All of this is done through, you know, attendance and screening so that we have proper contact tracing, face coverings, training modifications, social distancing measures, practice, and at games. And all this information can be found on the district website. When we talk about the high-risk sport offerings at this point in time, we're going to talk about, you know, our varsity for the winter sports, Varsity and JV Boys Basketball, Varsity and JV Girls Basketball, Varsity Ice Hockey, and Varsity Wrestling. Now, these are the current offerings that we have available on Family ID. And you can see the the participation numbers. These are actually pulled from our family ID system, so these are accurate numbers as far as who had registered. as far as who had registered to participate in those sports. In the Fall 2 Season, which would begin the first, second week of March, would be Varsity Football and Varsity in JV Volleyball. Now, these numbers are the anticipated participation numbers based off of the survey that was distributed last year. So they could fluctuate. And then our Spring Sports, as far as what's classified as high-risk offering, would be Varsity in JV Boys Lacrosse. And you can see the same as far as the survey that was conducted last year, the number of of participants is at 19 right now. So when we think about high-risk sports, we really need to consider the, you know, risk tolerance here. And you know, one thing that I know I've struggled with throughout all of this is, you know, the the physical health and safety of our student athletes, coaches, and spectators, but also the mental health. And, you know, in this memorandum that was distributed by the Westchester Department of Health, we have to make known basically the considerations for for everyone prior to engaging in high-risk sports. So the next few slides are going to be relating to that memorandum and their suggestions or, you know, their directives as far as what we need to follow. So, you know, they, in their documentation, you know, COVID-19 is still highly prevalent and variant strains have been found in our county. High-risk sports and recreation activities increase the possibility of transmission. I think we understand that with closer contact, there is that opportunity for that to happen. And then, you know, studies of sports transmissions show that brief interactions occur during these activities increase transmission risk, even if it's only for less than 15 minutes. Competitions and tournaments also increase the spread through additional interactions like riding on team buses, interacting, congregating in locker rooms. Now, I do want to speak to this point, these points here, because, you know, our our coaches, our student athletes, everyone involved with our sports have done a phenomenal job in adhering to the protocols that we established back in the fall. You know, and I'm proud to say and knock on wood that we did not have one case over the fall attributed to our athletic programs. Which, you know, was a testament to to that adherence and the compliance that that our athletes had. We wore masks at all times before riding buses. You know, we make sure that people are socially distanced on the sidelines. There are many precautions, and again, you could go into our 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 plan and see all the protocols that we put in place to ensure that safety. So I am confident that that our, you know, student athletes and our coaches would maintain this. When we talk about risk tolerance, there there is in this memo a lot of hesitation and apprehension surrounding wrestling. And I think honestly, it really has to do with the intimate nature of of the sport. Dr. Adler had referenced a study by the Journal of American Medical Association that while, you know, school transmission for COVID-19 was not found to be high, the resumption of in-person athletics increased the risk of transmission, particularly with wrestling. You know, in our kind of research in this, superintendent poll basically showed that there are only about 20% of districts were going to be offering wrestling. And I've had multiple conversations with with Dr. Huff, our district medical director, in regards to this. And again, I think we all kind of struggle between the physical health and safety of our student athletes and the the social and emotional well-being. You know, I I see firsthand, I have a high school student in my house, and the the lack of the ability to to be out there with their peers definitely has an impact. So, you know, we definitely take this into consideration. But when talking about our high-risk sports, we really need to kind of hone in and see what information is out there to make us, help us make the best informed decision. In talking with Dr. Huff, you know, the the physical proximity of the sport, the duration of the exposure, inability to wear masks, and the indoor nature nature of wrestling does increase that the potential of, you know, COVID-19 contraction. And because of the fact that more than likely, student athletes would not be able to wear masks during wrestling, it opens up approximate contact. So anything beyond six feet, anyone that would be there would be impacted by it. And I know that the advocates for wrestling have have provided a lot of information. There's an article that that was written in this memo that was sent to us relating to to wrestling and you know, in digging a little bit deeper, it it was, you know, I wouldn't say misrepresented, the the issue there was that there are a lot of schools involved, there's hotels involved. So the increased risk of it in the cases that they talked about in this memorandum really, you know, shone light on how difficult it is in the sport to maintain, you know, that type of of safety that we're looking for. You know, the ability, in my conversations with Dr. Huff, the ability to use shared equipment wasn't as much of a concern as it was with the exposure and not being able to wear a mask. And if we think about a sport like wrestling, you know, the headgear that that is worn during those activities comes off often. And, you know, I know that the mask would be extremely difficult to maintain and also may potentially pose a safety concern. Although it probably being small if they were wearing a mask, you know, as a choking hazard. But the guidance that kind of came out from some of the advocacy groups for wrestling did state that if if a mask were to, you know, come off, they would treat it like headgear that would come off, and they would wait for a period of time where they could stop, you know, the match and then have them readjust. But in in our thoughts and thinking about that, you know, there's still going to be much more exposure as far as, you know, not wearing a mask in that sport than any other. The next slide. So in the same memorandum, you know, winter low, moderate, and high-risk sports, if they're they're indoors, spectators are not permitted. With the exception of two spectators per senior home athlete for one senior night per team, unless the facility is more restrictive. And in this memorandum that that came out, this information was actually presented to us from the section prior to the Department of Health releasing theirs. In their form right now, in the memorandum that they sent out, they're not allowing any in-person spectators. But I was on the phone this afternoon with the the section to get some clarification on that because, you know, they they weren't aligned as far as what they were presenting, and I want to make sure that I provide you guys the right information. So as soon as I get further clarification on that, I will be sure to articulate that to our senior athletes. Outdoor sports similar to the fall would be two spectators per home athlete. Again, unless the facility is more restrictive. We put a lot of protocols in place as far as having people registered, checking in prior to arrival, making sure they're on a gate list. Again, health, safety screenings that we would do with temperature checks to ensure that everyone there was safe. You know, we we all look to support the overall health and well-being of our essential personnel. And I think that, you know, putting these parameters in place really ensures that our student athletes, our coaches, our chaperones, officials, and fans would be as safe as possible. This does kind of present a different, another issue, though, when it comes to live streaming of events. Because we want our student athletes to feel supported by their peers, by community members. And we want to provide them exposure if possible. And, you know, again, we want to afford those families and friends, the supportive community members, the ability to watch and support those athletes. So we are looking into, you know, possibility of of live streaming those events if no spectators are allowed.
So, and John, in in thinking about all this, as I said at the top of the presentation, we have a lot of conversations we need to continue to have throughout the course of the school year, as they pertain to all of our students' experiences. So tonight, we're exclusively talking about high-risk athletics. But I want you to be reminded that we're going to come back and we're going to have conversations this winter, this spring about increasing daily student attendance. So we recognize all those benefits that come with it. And and no one is going to argue that we really need to have our children in school more, that they're going to benefit academically, that it's going to serve their social emotional needs well. But the focus and the concern needs to be based around maintaining and supporting a healthy school community. So we have, as I said, in the process of launching a process where we're going to review this. In doing so, I'm going to lay a foundation where we have to have certain things that need to be delivered for us to be able to be able, be prepared to make a recommendation to the Board of Education and Community. And that first is vaccinations for all the district staff members. I've been working very closely with other superintendents in the region and looking to plan for additional vaccination clinics for school staff members. You know, there's, everybody needs the vaccine, there's no question about it. But we need to get it to our teachers, to all of the employees in our school district who want to take it. I wanted to remind you that we can't force someone to take it. Understand, the vast majority of our faculty and staff are going to, and they are waiting to get the vaccine if it's not already in process. But unfortunately, it's very difficult to get that appointment. And so we're working to try to add additional vaccinations clinics. In the event that local pharmacies are able to acquire vaccine that they can administer to school employees, we also have set up plans to be able to have them facilitate it for our staff. So we have really three scenarios playing out. One, staff members getting it on their own, I can tell you I'm going to get my first dose later this week. But it took a month and a half to get that appointment. There's some folks that still haven't had their first shot, and then we have to go for the second, of course. Then there's the partnership with the County Department of Health. Our county executive has been a partner in this effort in trying to set up some additional clinics for school employees to do it. I can tell you that I was text messaging with Executive Latimer this weekend and volunteered the Irvington Schools to be a location for one of these clinics if they are in need of other sites. We are, so we're working at that, and then there's that CVS-type component that we're looking at. And I want to give some thanks to Luanne Ruchardi, who has been my point person and doing lots of legwork and trying to make that happen. As I said earlier, we also need a system of monitoring the health in our schools. So if we were to consider increasing the density in our buildings, increasing student attendance on a daily basis, I'd want to establish a comprehensive surveillance testing program where we would have a particular number of students and staff tested on a regular basis. And we would set thresholds, tolerance thresholds, by which we would monitor the health in our schools. And if we exceeded that threshold, we then would revert back to a distance learning mode or a hybrid mode in that particular school based upon the scenario and the data before us. All specifics to be identified and developed with our reopening committee, with Dr. Huff, and the guidance that we need from the Department of Health. So when we take a look at where we are from a Department of Health standpoint, there's lots of guidance to weed through. There's practices that have been put in place. So we were going to seek clarification in and around expectations, read the letter of the law, so to speak, with each and every one of those, I mean, literally hundreds of guidance documents that we have that pertain to that to ensure that we have not only the structures in place, but the guidance and the rules to follow to ensure that students and staff are safe in our schools. So when we think about it, we're just not going to think about, geez, how many more kids can we bring back in, and can we do it safely? We're going to think about co- and extracurricular activities. How does that impact operations in schools where we're doing things remotely? I want us to take a look at performing arts, drama, instrumental music, vocal music, to think about those programs, and if there's things we can do to enhance that. You know, I had the opportunity of being in Mr. D.'s drama class the other day with Mr. Sotile, and to see this drama program that used to come to life with our kids learning and expressing their theatrical talents and passions, and to see them scattered around the room in a theater, not having that same type of experience. If you know Stephen Di Giovanni, you know Stephen's making an amazing experience for our children, but it's not that experience that we all necessarily want. So we need to explore things like that. We have to think of all those other opportunities that exist in our schools, how does recess look different, how does lunch look different? There are literally two pages lists of bullets that I've generated thus far that are going to be reviewed by our reopening committee. So we're going to reactivate that reopening committee. We're going to secure the vaccinations, whether we have to purchase them ourselves or we get them free from the state. We're going to finalize testing protocols and get those tests in the district. We want the deliveries coming with the test kits here. We're going to develop recommendations for potential expanded attendance. And I'm targeting my first recommendation to the board the end of next month. And when we think of implementation, I want us to be in a place, if we're going to be able to move forward, I want us to think about moving forward in the month of April. No hard fast dates, we have to make sure we have everybody on board. We have to make sure that we're hearing the concerns and have the voices of our teachers, our administrators, our parents, and the experts in this process. But I want us to be committed to having this conversation because frankly, I'm concerned about our kids. I'm concerned about their education. I'm concerned about their well-being and their mental health, whether it's looking at all of our 1,750 beautiful children here in Irvington, or the one that's sitting home in my in my living room right now. I'm concerned about our children, I'm concerned about their future, we need to get them back in school. I know our teachers want them back in school, so we are going to have this process to make sure that we take the appropriate responsible steps to do that, and to do so this spring, if at all possible. And in doing so, not only were we going to address those needs and thinking about those experiences for our students, whether it's athletics that we're talking about tonight, the end of next month, talking about broader reopening of our schools, and, you know, reopening is a term that we're using so broadly and generically these days. But we're focusing on the well-being of our children and providing for them today and the future. So we have some important decisions to make tonight, some decisions and discussions about athletics in particular. I know Dr. Huff is going to be joining us as well to be able to answer questions that the board may have of her. But we do have a resolution on the agenda that we want the board to consider tonight. And considering that resolution, we are recommending at this point in time that we grant the opportunity for high-risk sports. But we have pause, as John indicated, in and around wrestling. As your superintendent of schools, I say this with tremendous conflict because I can think of those individual students, I can think of our passionate coaches and their parents. But right now, I have a lot of concern. I I hear Dr. Amler, our Commissioner of Health, has expressed concern about wrestling. Our own school medical director has concern about wrestling. Such concern exists that many of the neighboring school districts, as John indicated in that one slide, in the meeting on Thursday, we did a poll of all the superintendents in the region, and only 20% were committing to doing so. And the rest were unsure, there was 55 to 60% that were immediately opposed to it. I have concern about wrestling, and I wish we could be in a position where I gave that an immediate vote of confidence. But right now, I'm uncomfortable doing so, and it, you could feel free to to critique the lack of expertise here, but when we defer to the experts, when they have question and concern, I think we need to pause as well. So that said, Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, and we'll move on to questions from the trustees. I just wanted to remind everyone in the audience that there'll be an opportunity for the community to provide comment after the trustees have their question. But also as a reminder, any questions that are put in the Q and A will not be read publicly. All you should do is put your name and home address in the Q and A. If you wish to speak, you'll be recognized, and everyone should try to keep comments to three minutes or less so we can have the opportunity to hear from as many community members as time affords. So with that, I'll start going down the line. Dave, if you have questions, go ahead.
My double mask is acting up, hold on, okay. So I have, thank you very much, everybody, for your, John, for your presentation, Dr. Harrison, for your recommendations. I have a couple of questions, I guess, I mean, I'm sure my colleagues will ask several of the questions I have in mind as well. There are lots and lots and lots of questions, as you so graciously indicated, but I I think a lot about, and this covers a lot of things, is what other, what other areas is this impact? So when we talk about bringing kids back into these situations with high-risk sports, with all of the different opinions and thoughts that we've heard and seen and read, one thing I haven't, we haven't talked about really is what is the impact one thing I haven't, we haven't talked about really is what is the impact of these athletes when they return into the schools? And you know, how that affects other schools with siblings in other schools and with, you know, kids in Main Street School and Dow's Lane and their playing environment, right? Like, you know, what do they do at Main Street School? They have the sports they play in the morning. They're the, what are they called? Intermural sports that they play in the morning, things of those effect. Will there be, we'll be, you know, visiting that and trying to bring the same kind of excitement back into their lives that they miss? You know, I just remember when, you know, I know they're doing the intermurals to a certain degree. But you know, what is the affect on everything else is my big question? And then the second piece in regards to wrestling is I just would love for some clarification on what the difference in terms, aside from the mask wearing, will linemen in football wrestle quite a bit with one another? And I wonder, they'll be wearing masks. Is that the only difference there with wrestling and sort of that high contact in football? That equates to me in the same mind of that circumstance. Those are my only questions.
You know, I certainly don't want, and I defer to John to be able to speak into it a little bit further. But I would say that there's, and I'm hesitant to use this word, but there's a much more personal intimate level of contact, literally skin to skin, face to face. And when I think of a skilled wrestler using their chin to gain leverage and position, there's a different level of contact that occurs. I don't think we overlook the contact that you're talking about, about linemen, you know, right up against each other, basketball players in the post, right? There's different levels of real tight contact. But I think there's a level of concern that exists with respect to wrestling that makes us uncomfortable, as much as I hate to say that. And the fact that some of the specific guidance indicates that they should not wear masks. So it's not if a mask comes off. If, I don't know if the mask is doing any good when literally cheek to cheek, nose to nose.
Football's outside as well.
But there's, you know, much, I've read guidance that says that you should not have a mask on because it is a choking or strangulation hazard.
For sure. I would, you know, echo Dr. Harrison's sentiment in that it is a very intimate sport, being so close and the ability to maintain that mask. I totally agree with your thought as far as, you know, football players and linemen pushing on each other. But their ability to make, keep a mask on would be greater than what a wrestler would be able to do if they were wearing a mask. Same with basketball and some of the other sports.
Great. What about the impact in other areas of the district athletics or even if they're not sports? What, you know, having these, by saying that, you know, it's okay for kids to play these high-risk sports, what is it saying about other activities is really the question.
I think that, you know, I think frankly, I'm going to tell you, I think the governor put priorities in the wrong place. I think conversation should have been had and direction being given across the state to focus on student attendance for teaching and learning before athletics, as much as I'm a sports fan. But that's what came to us first, and that's what we're dealing with first. You know, as you heard, we are going to put every protocol in place to provide the safest experience possible for our student athletes in the broader school community, recognizing that while they may be competing in a court, on a mat, wherever it may be, that those students go home into their houses, they go out into our community, they go into our classrooms. So this is a decision that's being made that in some ways I think could be seen as a bit of a pilot for that broader expansion of student attendance down the road, right? So if we're going to talk about changing protocols, looking at different levels of contact, thinking about, geez, how can we re-envision that drama program that I referenced before? Geez, this might be the pilot to help us feel more comfortable, be more prepared, or heaven forbid, learn some lessons to make other opportunities safer or possible down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
Okay, so with that in mind, I'd like to actually agree with Dr. Harrison on something. At first, I was very concerned about how the governor came out with athletics before he did anything about academics or any other opportunities that are important to many of our children. And I also would like to address what I'm about to say to the public tonight because I too was distressed to hear that there seems to be some misunderstanding that our board and our district has stood as an obstacle to the beginning of high-risk winter or other high-risk sports. Until February 3rd, we did not have any guidelines about how to permit that. And in fact, it was not permitted. So I just want to make that very clear before I begin with my questions. So one of the first questions I have, because, and let me introduce my comments with this. The whole idea about tonight's meeting is to understand the mitigation strategies that will allow the sports not only to be safe for our student athletes, but also for our non-student athletes and for the community at large. So the Department of Health has given us a number of guidelines. The first question I have is I know that our athletic director has been, is going to be named our COVID coordinator. Is that right?
That's correct.
But I also know that when we go and we play sports outside of, let's say, our home games, we may meet people who are spectators or people who run facilities who aren't going to be following the protocols, the mitigation strategies that are expected by the Board of Health. So is that going to be the responsibility of the coaches? Will the coaches have support? I feel very clearly that our athletic director and Hannah Gross and all the staff is dedicated to doing this for our students. But will there be somebody along with them to help? Because the coach certainly is supposed to be concentrating on other things. So I was wondering if there's an answer to that.
So John, I certainly want to defer to you to be able to respond initially. And, you know, I think the beauty of a conversation like this and the fact that it was important to me to bring this to a board vote and public discussion tonight was for us to have rich dialogue that can strengthen our plan moving forward. Because as John had presented before, I could have polled the board or made a unilateral decision, said heck, we're going to do this, and signed a letter with my authorization. That wasn't responsible of me, and it didn't provide the process that is appropriate for our school community. So that said, I think some ideas may come out of tonight that are really going to enrich the experience. So John, do you want to respond initially?
Yeah, so I have complete faith in my counterparts in other districts. We are having ongoing discussions constantly how we make our environment safer, not only our school, but for the schools that we're visiting. We have affirmation forms that we send out to schools basically stating that every one of their athletes have been tested before they arrive on our campus and vice versa. And we do the same thing. So, you know, I'm confident that, you know, the oversight by other athletic directors and other administrators, you know, will enhance the opportunities for our students to play and our coaches to play in a safe environment.
Thank you. That's helpful to know.
Yeah, and when I think back, that, I think, the comment by Lila before, that our students are going to hold each other accountable. And if there's something that they're going to see that's going to interfere with their ability to compete, I think they're going to raise the question themselves. They want to be out there, they want to play, they want the competition. So I think our students are going to really assume a leadership role in this as well.
That's really heartening to hear. I have a very granular question. It has to do with locker rooms. I know that our hockey team, I didn't quite understand the numbers. So it's seven Irvington students and then an additional number to make up the full team, and the additional number is 13 from a variety of other districts.
John?
Yes, so we have seven current Irvington hockey players registered. The remaining number was for the other schools that would be participating in our merger.
And who's in our merger, just to, you know, educate everyone, because not everyone's a hockey.
So it's Sleepy Hollow, Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, LaFell, and Austin.
Okay, so can I ask you about the locker room in terms of guidance? Because I know that in U.S. hockey and youth hockey now, the locker rooms are off base, that people are not using them. Is that what's going to happen in terms of the current guidelines?
WSA is the place that we have our home games and our practices. And the expectation is that student athletes arrive in their equipment. They would, of course, put their skates on when they get inside, but the locker rooms are closed, as is ours right now. Honestly, we have not used locker rooms all year.
Okay, so that would be true for all of the sports. That's a safeguard that's going to apply. Yes? Okay, thank you. And then my final question has to do, and we know that this is discretionary. So let's get right down to the issue of possibly having some sort of surveillance testing for our athletes. I'd like to know where we are on that, what thoughts we have about it, if it's doable. Would it be all athletes on a weekly basis? What thought has been given to this, and what can you share with us at this time?
Yeah, so I do want to remind the trustees that Dr. Huff is on the call as well. And maybe we'll invite Dr. Huff to join us for this part of the conversation. So when we step back and think about testing, and if we are to test all of our student athletes and to do so on an ongoing basis, if we really want to monitor them, like if you think of what's happening in professional sports, Division One sports in college, they're testing on like a daily basis. We don't have the capacity to manage something along those lines. So when we think of the idea of a surveillance testing program, it is really a monitoring tool, right? And you're going to take a sampling that's going to be a cross-section of the program as it's occurring at that point in time. So when we think of the different sports that would be carried out, we're looking ballpark, 75, 80 student athletes with this modified high-risk grouping that's here, right? So when you look at that, you could develop a model where you would say, follow the methodology that the New York State Department of Health developed for the different zones. You remember yellow zone, orange zone, red zone, that kind of all of a sudden, it was, it was a Department of Health policy that disappeared for some reason. But there was a methodology behind that. So they were looking at testing 20% every two weeks. What my thought would be is that during this five-week season, we'd be looking at testing 20% every of the five weeks of that particular season. In doing so, we'd be looking at a scenario where essentially you would get to everyone in that window of time that's participating in the sports. But since we're not looking at massive groups and you're looking at each week, you would have a subset of each of these teams that would be tested by proxy. You're beginning to test everybody because of the level of contact they're having. They're all coming in contact with each other on the court. So you would get a good sense if something is happening within a particular sport or a particular team. We have to be mindful that there's limitations to any of the rapid tests. We'd want to use a rapid test. We can't use a PCR test because, one, it's more expensive. Two, you're going to have to go somewhere to get it done. And, and three, it takes days to get the results. So we would have to use rapid tests, and in doing so, we know they're not perfect. We know that it doesn't detect early asymptomatic folks. It doesn't detect all symptomatic folks. We know that there's also false positives that come back out of it. But we could set up a monitoring program if that was the desire of the board. And in doing so, you know, I think of our student athletes that are on this call now, their parents, their coaches. We would need their support in cooperating with that. There's going to be an expense that comes with it. The first pass I would take would be trying to get free tests from the state. If we could get them in a timely manner, we would utilize them. And we would have to have our facilitation plan set up. If not, I will buy them. And we're looking at about $22 a test, we can acquire them. And so with other administration fees associated with it, we'd be looking at, you know, ballpark $450 to $500 a week if we're looking at that sampling that I talked about before. So Dr. Huff, would you mind sharing some other thoughts that you may have related to the concept of surveillance testing, reliability of rapid tests that would be utilized in such a scenario? You're muted. We're not hearing you. I'm not hearing her.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, I think that using rapid tests can be a nice way to get a gist of what's going on. And it can provide some reassurance to the community. And it can also really pick up disease if it's done properly. And what you just outlined, I think, is something that is reasonable. The more you test, you really start to extinguish the decreased sensitivity of rapid tests. They're quite specific, so your false positives are actually pretty low. Your false negatives are the ones that we worry about. But the more you test a static population, the more frequent that is, then the more reliable you are at really identifying illness. In the NCAA's, rapid tests are done three times a week. So if you're at a div one school and you're using rapid testing for surveillance, it's three times a week. That's really not that doable. And I would also say that because of the numbers we have, it's maybe not that necessary. There's a general consensus that once a week is a decent number of times to do testing to help with that, you know, bring up that, make up for that decreased sensitivity of the test. And if you are taking one basketball team, for example, you test 20% of that basketball team week one, 20% of that basketball team week two, and continue on for the remainder of the season, which would be about five weeks, then you've tested everyone. But like Dr. Harrison said, by proxy, your week three, you're testing 20% of the team. They're all commingling on the courts and in practice. So by proxy, you really are maybe effectively increasing your testing per se. So I think that makes me feel pretty comfortable. If you were dealing with a larger population, that might not be as comforting. But I think this makes it a pretty nice way to do surveillance testing with the rapids, if that ends up being something important.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was very, very helpful. I hadn't realized, you know, there's this sort of domino effect, a positive domino effect. So with these things being said, I know my colleagues have other questions as well. I just want to say that the testing could end up being a very helpful pilot to the reopening of the academic aspects of in-person learning. It's good to hear as part of this athletic presentation that we are thinking very strongly about all the things we can do to get more of our kids back for in-person learning. And thank you very much for mentioning instrumental and vocal music and theater because I was going to ask a question about that. And this is part of our new reopening committee because those two, we speak, we hear what parents are saying, those who are the parents of student athletes, we hear from the student athletes themselves. And all the comments about social and emotional health, the importance of socialization and teamwork are exhibited in these activities as well. And I'll just move on to my colleague, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you. That was some good questions and great information. Dr. Harrison, Mr. Bonamano, thank you for this presentation. As you shared, Dr. Harrison, you're starting from just not that long ago in terms of pulling together a lot of the information and planning, and Dr. Huff as well, and everyone in the district, from our administrators, faculty, staff, coaches, students. You're doing a great job. You're doing a great job. You know, we've had some great protocols in place. Everybody is doing what they need to do. I know when I talk to families and students that, you know, by and large, this is taken very seriously and that, as has been referenced, you know, students are talking to each other about the choices they're making. And I know particularly with, you know, the sports that we're talking about and other sports are taking place, you know, they're having to make those decisions now even before the decision that we have before us tonight about competition. So, you know, I really respect the work that everyone's doing to be safe and to make those good choices. So one question I have is with the approval, when would competition start for the sports? What's the soonest some of the sports would start?
John, do you want to speak to?
So once approval is given, dependent on the sport, you know, the sports that we were talking about, you know, possibly being approved, it would require six practice days before the first competition. You know, I'm confident that our student athletes have, are in good shape. We've been engaging them in like an open workout environment that had specific procedures that maintained social distance and did not utilize shared equipment to ensure their safety, but also work on their. but also work on their individual skills and conditioning. So, you know, that six-day marker is what we're looking to hit before we can start competitions.
And then I, I, would that, would there potentially be sports over the break or they would start after the break?
We would probably have to run through the break. You know, I know a lot of people probably won't want to hear that right now if they had other plans. But the season is already condensed due to the late nature of the announcements and waiting on some of the guidance. So, you know, we want to maximize, you know, the offering for our student athletes.
And so the six-day count you were talking about, that would, for example, we approve tonight, start tomorrow or that's already?
What, once the approval would happen, we would need some of that other information signed off by the, by the parent or guardians and the student athlete. And then dependent on, on what we decided as far as the testing would be concerned, you know, that would be, be a factor in when we could begin as well. We would be able to maintain at least practices that we've been doing as far as the socially distanced practices with non-shared equipment. If that was something that we needed to do in order to, you know, make sure that we start accumulating our, you know, practices. But, you know, it would be beneficial to be able to begin right away.
So just to try and clarify, the, the six days would be sometime in the middle of the break probably, if everything worked out quickly.
Yes, they did, the state did waive a seven-day waiver. So we do have the opportunity to just, to practice and play throughout. Typically, you only have six days a week that you could practice. So they did waive that, knowing that it was a very condensed season.
Got it, okay. That's, that's very helpful. And I mean, I guess pros and cons to your advice and your announcements, Dr. Harrison. This would actually be another example of where these families and these students would be having to make the choice of these student athletes, their coaches and everyone associated to be around for the break and not, not go if they want to participate. I just also, in terms of, we have other indoor sports that are occurring like fencing. Can someone speak to the ventilation we have in our indoor spaces? And perhaps what we know about other districts, is everybody able to do what we've been able to do?
I, I certainly can't speak to every single space in, in, in every district. I know that when we think of all the recommendations that have been put forth, we've complied with them. So spaces that have, for example, rooftop air handlers in the Irvington schools, we installed the MERV thirteen filters in all cases. And in doing so, that's the top level of filtration. But everybody across the region, if they don't have that, they're providing additional ventilation. So there's going to be windows that are going to be open in a gymnasium. So you have fresh air circulating in the space. And then in that period of time that kids are in there, you know, we're also limiting anyone that's entering the space. So, you know, we're not going to have spectators. So we have to be mindful that you're literally going to have two teams and the coaching staff and their trainers in the, in that room. There won't be any spectators. So everybody will be socially distanced to the best we possibly can and that there would be adequate ventilation. You know, I have not learned of any real challenges across the region as we're hearing in other parts of the country where there's serious issues or concerns related to ventilation.
So, yeah, I just want to echo, I'll try and be brief, you know, some of the comments that were made before. Thank you, everyone who's brought up, you know, that, that there are so many other experiences. I'm a sports fan in terms of our high school athletes and what they're able to do. I'm also a fan of, of destination imagination and science Olympiad and theater and the other things that have been mentioned. So I think, I, I, I thought of a similar word that you already have used, Dr. Harrison, in terms of, of thinking of this as a potential pilot for expanding those experiences. Could you speak to why it takes the time that you have in your timeline for exploring and implementing? Because I think, you know, obviously you scrambled and were able to put together this very quickly. You help community members understand why it might take the time it does to look at these other experiences and the ability to, not just for student athletes, but all our students, look at opportunities?
So to get to where we are today, I want to remind everybody that how John spoke about us being proactive. And this was a decision that we saw coming down the pike. The governor made that, that announcement, as I said, two and a half weeks ago earlier. Maybe it was three and a half weeks ago. So there's been, just to kick off, the prospect of sports for, as I said, roughly seventy-five, eighty students. We've had three and a half weeks to plan to get to where we are today. And that's looking at all the different considerations of how we would comply with protocols, the work that John would do, the coaches would do, the role of student athletes, the prospect of developing and administering a surveillance testing program to have that level of specificity that we do already. That was two and a half, three weeks right there to get to where we are today. So when we think about the interfaces, so many people and the engagement and its impacts on operations and operating an entire school campus and all the components and how they all interface, needs to have all those folks there together talking. So right now, when we think about what is occurring in a school, our teachers are teaching in an environment where they have roughly fifty percent of their kids perform and fifty percent home for, you know, four days a week. It's going to look and feel very different as having all the students in the classroom. We have to navigate what that guidance looks like to determine that we're comfortable and that it's health and safe, there's health concerns are addressed by putting everybody in the room. But we have to also think, well, what does that take to get it? We may want to be buying additional protective equipment for our classrooms. You might want to think that we want to put the polycarbonate barriers on every single desk so that, as another protection, right? We, when we think about surveillance testing, we're thinking about not, you know, fifteen students a week. We're looking at a cycle of where we're going to be doing, you know, ten percent of our students potentially and staff every other week. And so you think of ten percent of roughly seventeen hundred students, three hundred fifty staff members. Ten percent is two hundred tests every two weeks. When we think about transportation, how is it going to look and feel differently on a school bus? How are we going to serve kids lunch? It, it's going to look and feel different. Every aspect of operations are going to be different if we get to that place. So I don't want to put a cart before a horse and say, yeah, we're going to do it. I believe we need to do it. I believe it's the right thing for our kids. I believe it's the right thing for people in general. But we got to make sure we can navigate all those different pieces. Think of every changeover in a classroom. You think about every time students go to the bathroom. You think about snack breaks. You think about lunch. You think about how specials look different. You go on layers and layers. Like I said, I have two pages list, single space, just bullets of every aspect that I brainstormed over the last week that this committee is going to have to delve into. So it, there's going to be an extensive amount of work to, to see what hurdles are there, what solutions we have. And then when you bring all these other voices to the table, what are the other questions they're going to raise that I haven't thought of or, you know, Carol and Mary haven't thought of that's on paper right now? So it's going to take time. We need to do it right. I don't want to be in a spot where we make a mistake and do something that's going to put the health of anyone at risk.
Yeah, I contrast what you just said with, you know, I think there's a, you know, I feel, you know, personally, you know, in, in my family, I, I see it in the letters that we've received. Heartfelt letters that we want to do it right. We want to be safe, but there's a sense of urgency because experiences are moving behind us and those opportunities to have those experiences. And so that's why, you know, right now, this is before us, let's do this now. But it's true about all these other opportunities for students and for learning. So I, I think that's the hard balance. And again, it, you, I think, really ably explains the complexity of expanding this. So in, in thinking of this as sort of a pilot, I think we have to, to really think about the mitigation piece, which has been talked about. And so you talked about the antigen testing, but we also know that some other districts are using other tests. For example, Byram Hills, Marmarineck, Hackley are using the Miramis saliva test, which is a PCR test that has turned around in twenty-four to forty-eight hours and has high reliability. And apparently the cost is pretty competitive too. Have you, I mean, can we consider looking at, at that type of test? I mean?
Yeah, there's, there's different possibilities that are out there. I know there's some concerns that have been raised. You know, I, I don't like the terminology. People refer to it as a spit test, the saliva test because of the contact of saliva in a different way. That's not, a little more concerning than a basic nasal swab that's involved in the others. So when you look at the other antigen tests and Dr. Huff, I don't want to act like I, I know your business here. But, you know, a nasal swab of the lower nostril is all that's needed and it can be self-administered. The spit test, I know it's the same, but there's also concern about getting saliva on the container and the like. Both, both work. Dr. Huff, do you have any experience or knowledge about? I just hear what I, what I've heard and know what I've read.
I think the pooled testing is successful and it's another option to explore. It could be a little more complex. It's certainly more pricey. And the results, while they don't come as, I think the beauty of the antigen testing, maybe specifically for sports, is that it's a very fast turnaround. Obviously, it's fifteen minutes and you can really kind of hit the ground running. But if you extrapolate to a larger testing situation, that pooled testing is something that's well thought of. It's, it's worth investigating, you know, and I've done a bit of that investigation. So it's a conversation to have. There's pluses and minuses.
Yeah, so just to, to wrap up my, my questions, I, I appreciate the, that you've put in front of us a timeline for looking at these other opportunities. And I look forward to, to hearing about that work. I, you know, before we go to vote, I, I would really be looking to hear for, about consensus and a commitment around testing. Because I, that's for me, a critical component of supporting, moving forward with this resolution. And I, you know, as I looked at this, there's, there's surveillance testing and pool testing, which is the larger and small, you know, you know, number of students or, or population being tested, a percentage of them. Here, you know, I was, I, I was leaning more towards screeners, you know, essentially looking at, at all our students, but not just our students. I mean, we know why we've been taking precautions we've been taking. And thankfully, for the most part, for young people, this doesn't affect you in the same degree that it does some of the older folks around us, adults. We are trying to keep you safe, but I, I think you agree with us that whether it's your teacher, your coach, a family member, we want to keep them safe. And I know on our sidelines, we have great people that I want to make sure stay safe, whether that's some of our staff or some of our volunteers. But I would ask, if, if we're not going to do screening of, of our whole team and our staff associated with sports, that we at least look to include some, you know, those folks who we know we want to keep healthy and that, you know, they have the opportunity to be tested as well. Does that make sense?
Can you just clarify an example?
I'm talking about people who do scoreboards, our coaches, our trainer, those kind of folks.
No, that makes good sense. jot it down, John.
Michael, just to clarify, I think what you're saying is that, let's say we have eighty athletes plus coaches plus those assorted people. We get to, you know, a hundred, a hundred and ten, whatever it may be. And that we look to do ten, twenty percent, whatever it may be, of that larger group as a surveillance test as opposed to just the athletes.
Right. And, 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 you know, my starting point was test everybody weekly. But i- if we can have consensus around doing the, the surveillance testing as you just described it. And, and I would say particularly for some of the more at risk of that population, that maybe it's more than just one time, that maybe it could be, some of those folks could be even weekly. I, this, you know, we're doing this because we care about people. And, and I want to make sure that those of us who are participating that may be more at risk are, have even more monitoring than, than, you know, folks who are less at risk.
Thank you. More?
Thank you. So I don't know if anybody can hear me through both masks. If I get lightheaded, I may, I may stop for a minute. Thank you, thank you to everyone who has worked so hard to get this decision so quickly before us as well. I think that the recognition that Dr. Harrison made about the timing of this decision ahead of school opening is, I mean, it makes it a particularly difficult one. And a couple of other questions that I had were related to this timing issue. So we're talking about being in competition should this vote, so should, should this resolution be approved within a week? What percentage of teachers will be fully vaccinated at that time? Do we think?
Very few.
Yeah.
Very few. So we have a handful, I would say. You know, if we come back and that roughly three hundred fifty employees in the district, you could probably count on one person's fingers and toes, the number of people that have received both vaccines. I can tell you, you know, I'm constantly collecting data in and around this and not only for our own knowledge, but to inform the work that we're doing and the planning that we're trying to do with the county. My survey that I administered yesterday, we still have a hundred and, about a hundred and ten people district-wide that responded to the survey that they don't have an appointment within the two to three-week window of yesterday. So one-third of our staff hasn't even had the first dose or is not expected to get the first dose within the next three weeks. And so you have to think there's folks like myself that have an appointment within, between yesterday and three weeks that didn't even respond because we have the appointment. So, so there's very few. Fortunately, I know some of our nursing staff has, has both, both shots already, which is great. And there's some that do, but we have a long way to get there. That's why we need the county's help.
Thank you. I would also add that I think that, and I, I think my colleagues on the board, as, as have you, Dr. Harrison, have brought up the fact that this is the, this is the difficult period in the response to the pandemic where opportunities are presented to students perhaps unequally, right? And it makes it very difficult, you know, makes a more difficult conversation because yes, we're talking about one aspect of student athletics in Irvington first. But along with, along with my colleagues, I agree that, that using this as a pilot for other processes and learning from it is, is, is probably the best we can hope. I would also, I would also concur though with my colleagues who want to see surveillance testing. And I would want to know, does that start, does that start at the beginning of the first week or at the end of the first week? And how, you know, how, how is that all decided? Should, should that be a part of this decision?
Yeah, I would say that with the board's authorization tonight, we, the objective would be to have the first round of tests within a week. So, you know, next week, we would have the first round of tests administered next week. And we've developed the process, the protocols, secure the tests, set the date. Send out, John's office will send out the notification to those individuals that would be in that first cohort. And we'll have an appointment and those tests will be administered. You know, I, I think it would happen within a week.
Thank you. The other, the other question that comes to mind is, that, that's difficult about the timing of this is that we don't have a sense of where the, or, or what costs are going to be associated with possible school reopening at the, at any point in this year, which I know is, we've all agreed, is something that we want. But not having those costs to look at and to know how perhaps these testing costs will fit in is, is something that I think we all would, would like to have at this point in the decision. And I, I bring it up not because I necessarily have a solution to it, but just to say, you know, that is, that's part of what we are here to, to look at.
So when I think, you know, I, I don't have all the answers for you today, but if we were to think about some of those key elements that would be looking to help keep our schools safe in that broader reopening, increasing the density of attendance, you know, we're going to be looking to navigate the, the state requirements in and around social distancing. So when we think about social distancing, if you read the state guidelines, it says six feet or a mask. What has been adopted across our region has been, been supported by, by Westchester Department of Health. What has been adopted across our region has been in supported by by Westchester Department of Health, supported by the county executive. I can remember he put a statement up on the the county's social media accounts, supporting six feet and a mask. What we have to step back is to look into the guidance, look into the studies and the research. And very deliberately, six feet or a mask was included, right? It didn't say six feet and a mask. It said six feet or a mask. We decided locally and across the region that six feet and a mask was important for us, and that was supported by the County Department of Health, all medical experts. So when we step back and look at where we're going, there's considerations that we have to have here that's going to mitigate that level of safety and security that we've created with that six feet of space. So in doing so, we're going to look at the barriers. We know we can secure barriers for roughly $45,000, let's say. That Carol and Doreen have done their their great research. They found a great product that we can utilize, that we can source in a couple of weeks' time if we need it. We've already, if you remember going back to presentations in January or December, we've talked about, it was December, testing. If we were to launch a surveillance testing program on a larger scale, similar to what we defined before, we have costs of approximately $3,900 every round, which was every two weeks. So we can do all the math on some of those things that right out of the gate, we could suspect we're going to need. What we're not going to know is those expenses that are going to come out of that other committee work, those other measures that we're going to have to explore to make sure the schools are safe. So some of those real big cost items, we can figure out now and we, you know, we can turn and say 3,900 times how many cycles, right? We could do that today. We know $45,000 for the barriers. So we could say we could, if those are the only two expenses, we could reopen schools with that financially. We could find a way for the board to support that. But it's the other question marks that we don't know today. It's navigating that Department of Health guidance, and maybe that was a little bit of a dance that I did before in talking about that, that how do we go from this environment of six feet and a mask to looking straight at what's on paper from New York State Department of Health to six feet or a mask? So how do we transition our environment for us to feel safe? How do we monitor our environment to make sure it is safe?
We are, it's clear that the that all of the districts are feeling their way and that, as you said before, the state is pushing down certain decisions on these things, not to mention, and I'll just say this once because it's clear that what this essentially becomes is an unfunded mandate, right? We can open the schools, but someone's got to pay for the testing, right? If we're going to if we're going to feel like we are doing the responsible thing for the entire school community. So it's a, you know, every year we sit here and say these things, I think. I don't want to, I don't want to take up more time for my colleagues who I know want to also ask questions, but I would encourage those families of of artists and performance artists and and musicians and those who who also want to get back to their performances advocate for their, for those activities and as well that, as as my colleague, David Graber mentioned earlier, that we would also look at other opportunities to get kids into sports, so intramural sports that, I mean, if we if we can do this, we have to be able to get these other kids moving and we need, we know we need this. We know that these families are here waiting for us all to talk because they 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 know their kids need it, so the rest of the kids need it too. Thank you.
Thank you. So excuse me. Yeah, I just want to make a comment and I think then we'll go to the trustees on who are on Zoom. So now I think, Dr. Harrison, you know, you're talking about an important thing is that, you know, here we have at least guidance from the Department of Health regarding athletics and and how that should look. And, you know, that's an area where we need to have continued dialogue with our our local Department of Health in terms of what our environments should look like and what they are going to put out there in terms of guidance. I mean, so I don't want people to think that that we've just been sitting back and not looking to do things. The Department of Health guidance has been very clear throughout this. I think the Department of, you know, Health is looking at things and looking as we learn more about the virus and transmission, about ways that there could be modifications. It so happens that, you know, I guess, sports has been the one that's been pushed forward now, and and that's where we're at. But, you know, we do have to look at this in the larger context of where we've been and what the guidance, you know, has been, where it currently stands, and not just to proceed, you know, without having that in mind.
Agreed. Agreed. Yeah, it's ongoing conversation. Dr. Huff, we, you know, either me, Carol, or Mary are talking to her almost on a daily basis. We've developed a wonderful relationship. But, you know, it's that ongoing conversation about what we have to do to make our schools safe. Not that the Department of Health is necessarily going to sign off on a plan, but if there's certain certain protocols or strategies we're looking to implement, I believe we have a good enough relationship with the the county and certainly Dr. Huff to be able to give us feedback on what our thinking is to be able to inform what we may.
Thank you. Erin, did you have any questions?
I do. I, um, thank you to everyone that's worked on this. I know it's been fast and furious to kind of get something together and in front of us. And I think we all support the idea of all these children being able to support their passion, right? And participate in these sports. Kids are missing out on so much these days. And I don't think anyone can dispute the social emotional well being for the students. With that being said, I think just to sort of piggyback off of Beth was saying, it's about the mitigation strategies that we have in place to support it. And not to be redundant, but as we talk about testing, if we could just have a little bit, I would love just a little bit of clarification. Is the testing mandated for 20% or 20% of the population going to voluntarily come forward to be tested? Have we thought about that? And is there a preference?
So when we think about we have to look at this two different ways, Erin. If we're looking at testing, whether it is in athletics versus standard school attendance attendance, there's different standards that sit with that. So athletics is considered a privilege. It's not a right. You know, when we think about a free and appropriate public education, right? We're thinking about athletics is a privilege. So the board, by way of their resolution tonight, if you were to approve athletics, you could do so. And with the caveat and amend the resolution that you would like to ensure that surveillance testing is performed to include all student athletes. That can be a requirement that the board sets. However, if we think about the return to school in traditional sense with greater student attendance, that would be a voluntary program. We could not legally mandate that unless it was a directive that came from the governor or the executive order or something through state legislate, state legislature. So two different scenarios. If we just focus on athletics, yes, we can mandate it for our student athletes.
Thank you, Chris. That was immensely helpful. And I would definitely prefer supporting a resolution that includes a caveat that the testing is mandatory. So I'm just going to throw that there. I don't know how the other trustees feel. I guess if we, the other question I have is in terms of, and we know that schools are not the super spreading events that we thought they would be when schools started. And part of that is because of our mitigation factors and strategies we've put in place, right? We've done six feet and masks and without partitions or anything like that to be even closer. So I'm just wondering, based on our current infection rates, if we were to see that sports led to a higher infection rate within the school, what is our thought around that? Like, would we ask athletes to go remote potentially? Because as you said, it's it's a privilege, but going to school is obviously not, you know, just to mitigate because the athletes are making a choice to participate and and a choice to sort of bear maybe that increased risk. But the other children in the classroom are not making that same choice and may feel, and they may not feel as comfortable knowing that we've sort of expanded the allowances outside of outside of the normal school day, right? We've been so strict. If you travel to another state, you need to get tested. When kids are playing recess, you can only, you can't share a ball, you can't do that. So like, there are so many things we have in place that are so rigid and it's what's kept us safe. And now we're sort of expanding that bubble, which puts other kids at risk, you know, in the classroom. And I think we just have to remember, like, we're trying to protect everybody and everyone's social emotional being. So I just want to, what's the thought about that? Like, if the infection rate were to increase? And I don't know where we are now, if we have that data, but.
Yeah. So when we think of infection, the infection rate in in the schools is exceedingly low and it was something, you know, we're not seeing examples of in school spread at all, which is notable. But when so, you know, when we think of the infection rate, that's something that we could clearly calculate because we could go to a database. You could go to the state dashboard to see the number of people in our schools that have tested positive recently. But when we when we step back and we think about, from a school district perspective, we could not mandate a student to participate in that was participating in high risk sports, the mandate that they attend school remotely. They would have access to the same type of learning experience that every other child would, and they should be coming to school unless they had other accommodations. I know of one particular school district that is asked student athletes to volunteer or their families to volunteer for them to attend school remotely, for them to participate in high risk sports. And that was an agreement, I understand, that was underway in that particular district. But we cannot mandate that students attend remotely.
I, um, that sounds good. And I guess one other question, and I guess this, you mentioned the yellow, red, the green, red, yellow, New York State Department of Health guidance that they were giving within the communities, that does seem to have been abandoned. I don't know if it has completely. But when we look at sports where we're playing with other towns, how does that impact the ability of the team to play? Like, I think, I guess, Tarry Town Sleepy Pahalo, I think, was in a yellow. So are those kids allowed to participate in sports if they're in a yellow with a district that's not yellow? How does that work? And maybe it's not applicable at all. I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's no, essentially no more yellow zones in the state of New York.
There isn't. Okay.
Yeah, that that whole, I I I giggle because it was promoted as that we were making decisions across our state utilizing science. And then all of a sudden, it was thrown out the window and said, we know, the data didn't change, but we no longer have yellow zones except for two spots. It was Manhattan and Portchester, Manhattan, I forget, two in the entire state. So the data was the same. So the science, I I say this tongue in cheek, the science must have changed somehow. So I'm not quite sure. But no, there's, there's no concerns with respect to that. There'll be limited travel. We're not going to be traveling to other parts of the state. And if there were, was to be a particular outbreak, our athletic COVID coordinator would be monitoring that data in other districts to ensure we're not sending our kids into an area where there should be concern.
Um, thank you. And I guess my last question, and it sort of relates to what's been said. Dave asked about what's the impact on some of our other activities? Is that something as we engage in the reopening committee activities that we could look at rolling out some modifications if we think it's if it's appropriate? And I do think about recess because I feel like it's just been very limited for the kids. So if there's a way to sort of expand that they can share a basketball, but they wash their hands, or we wash the ball, or whatever that might be, if that's an option, just to allow for some things to to occur again.
Yeah, I I think those are all the things that we'll explore in our reopening process. When Michael asked earlier, why might we need such a window of time to make a decision? Because those are all the little details that we have to look through, and some of it will be a phased approach. Maybe some answers that we could have along the way. So yeah, there are all different considerations, Erin.
Okay, that's I was looking for, could we phase things like that in? That was sort of, thank you. That's it. I'll, it's late enough for everyone. I know the community wants to comment, so thank you.
Thank you. Just before I go, Jane, I just want to clarify something because I I just want to make sure that the code of conduct states that athletes have to submit to testing if it's something that the district engages in. So it's a mandatory obligation for for athletes if we choose to do that.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
So I think I thought there was a little confusion after after that discussion. So Jane, go ahead.
Yes, I I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the thought and the hard work that you put into moving forward with the high risk sports. I feel a little bit better after seeing the presentation. But I do have a couple of questions. How many games will the teams play? So I just can know how many times they're going to be interacting with other, with students from other schools. So what's the roster?
So the maximum amount of contests allowed are 12, 12 competitions.
So they will be meeting 12 times with other schools or maybe like two times with Artsley or something like that?
Potentially. That would just be the maximum amount of games that we could compete in. There's going to be a lot of factors involved. If a district, you know, that we're supposed to play has a positive case and we can't play them and there's not enough time to reschedule, it could be less than that.
Okay. And, um, so if one person, one team member in Irvington tests positive, I'm assuming the whole team has to quarantine for 10 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, based off the information that we have now, yes.
So, okay, that's a small part of the season. Now, in thinking about the risk that this puts the whole community at, not just the athletes, but the whole Irvington community, would it be possible to just have varsity play? I would be okay with just the varsity teams competing. Has that been thought about, just varsity? Start out with that.
Some some districts I know have kicked that around a little bit, but I, you know, from my perspective, I wouldn't want to restrict, you know, the opportunity for some of the other student athletes to participate as well.
Because in my opinion, that would cut the risk in half. So I was just wondering if that was, you know, an option that's open on the table.
It's something that we hadn't discussed, but it, anything's a consideration. You know, certainly, you know, I think we get to a point too where we have to consider how many schools are going to be providing this opportunity for their students before we begin to actually squash any kind of interscholastic league from existing as well. So there are fewer schools that have JV squads. So, you know, we'd be diminishing experience for others and preserving the the well being of our own kids. My recommendation would be, as is on the agenda at this point in time. But if that was a consideration for the full board, we certainly could discuss it further.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, was it Jane? So so before we, because I just wanted to wrap up, I'm hearing from the board a desire for some sort of surveillance testing to be part of going forward with athletics. So I see a lot of head shaking, so I I think there's a consensus around that. So with that, why don't we move on to our community comments on this? So first, we have Ryan Schwam of 27208 Town Green Drive, Elmsford, who's a father of an Irvington student. So Mr. Schwam, please go ahead once you're, once you're able to speak. And just to remind everyone to try, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Yes. Hello, this is Ryan Schwam. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, um, I believe the the analysis of the risk regarding wrestling is incomplete. Certainly in regards to the intimacy of wrestling, I agree, it is very intimate. And whether or not a mask could be worn during competition is also questionable. However, the other very important variable is the number of potential contacts. Wrestling is different from many other activities in that it's a one to one competition. So if the Irvington wrestling team is having a duel meet with Edgemont, the 152 pound wrestler for Irvington will only make contact with one other wrestler, the 152 pound wrestler from Edgemont. So that's a huge part of the calculations that have been completely left out. In addition, I want to say that the majority of the public schools in Nassau County and in Suffolk County, which are also very well educated and affluent areas, the majority of those public schools are moving forward with wrestling seasons. Can someone please? Can someone please respond to that for me?
Dr. Harrison.
No, I understand that there's, um, different conditions that are placed in, in different, um, in different, uh, school districts. Mr. Schwam, the point that you make with respect to individual student contact, um, is not ignored, and, and is something that, um, we certainly are, are aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Adam Krieger, 29 Sheldon Avenue in Tarrytown.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I just want to thank, uh, Dr. Harrison, the board, uh, for putting the time into this. I can clearly tell that there's a lot of time and effort put in outside of, I would say, normal work hours. And I would say the whole community appreciates that. For those who don't know, I am a former wrestler and football player for Irvington. I have also coached both sports in the district. And although I haven't met, uh, Mr. Bonamano yet, I, I look forward to meeting him in the future. There's just one important thing I want to bring up, as going off of what Mr. Schwam said, the one-on-one contact. It is, although it is a very intimate sport, it is not as, um, group-oriented as it seems. You practice with one or two drill partners, not with the entire team. And although I, um, am not sure about the mask-wearing while you wrestle, it, it seems like it is something that is possible to do. But in regards to football, the one thing that I don't think was pointed out today by anyone is that wrestling and football are, while both intimate, and the lineman use was brought up for football, football is outside and wrestling is inside. And the, and masks can easily be worn under a football helmet. Football helmets are designed tightly around the ears. So where your mask is, you, you know, it would be sliding around less than if you weren't wearing a helmet, or it probably would move around less than if you're just sitting in a classroom. And it's just, for someone who, like I said, I was a wrestler and a football player, I, I know the amount of work and effort these guys put in. And I just think that the kids should be given a chance to show what they've got and do, you know, all the work they put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Jim Waters, 25 Pine Lane in Irvington.
Mr. Waters, can you unmute? Hello, are you there?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, my question around, uh, is around the Department of Health recommendation to move forward with wrestling and these other sports. Was there something about the Department of Health recommendation and the rigor that they put through that you didn't have faith in? Because I struggle a bit with the discrepancy of, of their approval and, and our, or your recommendation not to move forward. So can you, can you touch on that, either Dr. Huff or, or Dr. Harrison? Yeah, um, Dr. Huff, I certainly will defer to you in a second. Um, but what I would say, uh, Mr. Waters, that while the county did put it forward, they put it forward for local school districts to make the determination establishing a set of protocols and requirements that we would implement. Where I sit, and saying this with tremendous respect, that Dr. Amler, who has been an incredible partner to all school districts, medical professionals in the region, um, as much as to what they said on paper, she has verbalized that she has significant concerns in authorizing wrestling. So I, I have a hard time getting those words out of my mind, coming from the county commissioner of health. And where that's not written in paper, those were words that were stated and that were relayed to superintendents across the region and athletic directors across the region. So we, that can't be lost on us. Um, Dr. Huff, I don't know if you would expand on that, and you certainly don't feel, have to feel the need to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would echo what you said, I think is, um, there's a lot of reservation. And, uh, I would leave it at that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Uh, next we have Amy Anacarico, 81 Sheldon Avenue in Tarrytown. Uh, Miss Anacarico, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, first, I'd like to, um, thank the board and the administrators for your tireless work this year. It is just above and beyond what, what has gone on in this district. Um, obviously, this is something that sits very, very close to my heart. And, um, I just also wanted to say that I have complete faith in Mr. Bonamano, our amazing athletic trainer, Hannah, and, um, also our Irvington community. And like, uh, we had mentioned, our students who have, I think, gone above and beyond to, um, do what they, you know, can do to protect their community. I'd also like to speak as a founding Athletic Booster Club board member. And, you know, speak to the fact that we would love to also, you know, reach out and become partners, whether it's volunteers. Um, I know somebody had spoke to support, um, during games and things, you know, of that nature. And I know that, um, the district seemed to do an amazing, um, job during the seasons that have already played, um, which I think also kind of hasn't, we haven't really touched on that a lot. There has been a whole season, um, that went off, I'd say, what seems like very well, um, with large groups of kids running near each other and breathing with masks on. And, and, and everybody has done a fantastic job. But once again, I'd like to just say that the Booster Club is here to partner with, um, the district. And please feel free to reach out to us if, um, there's anything that you need.
Thank you very much. Uh, we certainly always appreciate the help and support we get from all of our partners. And, uh, certainly, uh, if there's things that we can use the Booster Club to help support, we will certainly let, uh, you guys know. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next we have Jennifer Stein, 25 North Ecker Street in Irvington.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to, um, really look at this issue and, um, take it seriously. As we all know, this year has been really like no other. And I have to say, I work in another school district, so I see both sides of, um, of what has been going on. And I really feel like Irvington has done an amazing job keeping our schools and our community safe. Um, as a school psychologist, I just want to speak a little bit to how important, um, the mental health is in this whole topic of discussion. When Sarah was speaking earlier about how her daughter was playing field hockey, that really resonated with me because my son, who's a senior, has played, um, sports his whole life and really has looked forward to just what Sarah was talking about at, at the start. That she has been in school all day or on Zoom all day, and being able to have that time in the field with her teammates really, really made a difference. I don't think our quote-unquote, um, our quote-unquote, um, high, uh, risk sports kids have gotten that opportunity. I agree with Amy that there have been other sports played all year. So some of the concerns about traveling and going to other schools, I think the, um, athletic staff has done an amazing job keeping that all in check. So with that said, I, I really encourage this to go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any other, uh, people in our comments. So at this point, uh, we will end, uh, community comment. There's obviously another, uh, opportunity after our, uh, other presentations, uh, for those who, who stay on. But, uh, as I say, we certainly appreciate the, the members of the community who came out tonight to, to listen, those who participated, those who sent letters on the, the topic. Uh, we always appreciate, uh, the engagement of the community on, on issues, both, uh, big and small. So, uh, thank you to everyone. And with that, uh, we will now move on to the remainder of our agenda. So, uh, Dr. Harrison, uh, budget time.
Well, there's actually a resolution before the board.
Right.
As it relates, eight, item eight-two.
Eight-two, I thought that was on, as part of the consent, in that we were.
So if it's, I can say it's on consent, uh, maybe you want to pull it out, since I know we have so many community members here that are waiting to. And so my apologies for that. I should have, I should have kept that as a separate standalone vote. But if we were to do that, and having heard the feedback from the board, I'm going to allow you to voice your opinion with regard to the, um, recommendation that I put forth for the sports to be included in the resolution. But I would, if you, everyone puts your eye on the, the resolution itself, before the, um, before further resolved statement, I would, um, Patricia, I would give you this with the board's approval, add another statement that would be, be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Irvington Union Free Schools District establish a COVID-19 surveillance testing program in which all high-risk student athletes shall participate, be integrated there to be memorialized that directive from the Board of Education that would set forth that expectation that we would then implement, um, for all the student athletes.
Now, just maybe if we could add, um, I'd like to direct the conversation.
You know, yeah, so everybody, did you have, uh, a, a comment? I would say, I, I, I don't want to sit here and try to hammer out the specifics of the testing program. I think if there's a commitment that there's a robust testing program of surveillance nature that, uh, is informed by the medical professionals, that, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. I, since none of us, uh, are medical professionals, I would leave it to you, Dr. Huff, and the guys from the county in terms of an appropriate number of people who will be tested and, and the nature of the program.
All right. So what I, all I'm asking for is the memorialization that, and, and if we know in minutes potentially then, memorialization that the board has the expectation that our high-risk student athletes will participate in it, because it has to be set forth by directive here that it's a requirement for them to participate in the program. Understanding that the program is, the testing is going to be made available to other folks that are connected with the athletic program. So that is understood and expect, and, and expectation on my side as well. And I'm glad that it was raised. What I can't do is I can't mandate one of my employees to be tested.
Right, but it's offered.
It's offered.
I mean, and then one other possible changes, I, I have to say that the, the explanations provided by some of the, uh, question, you know, community comments, to my mind, uh, I, I, I'm open to the idea of, of wrestling, participating, uh, with further analysis on, on the part of, of, you know, your, your office and, and the athletic department. I don't know if anybody else.
I was gonna add, I was gonna, I was gonna add that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not necessarily willing to shut the door on wrestling per se, but I mean, I don't know where that stands in terms of this conversation.
Yeah, and I would join David and Michael, but I think we would have to perhaps put that off or somehow.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I, I think for this evening, if we proceed with the sports in front of us, but have a, you know, hearing this, have a further conversation around wrestling. And I think part of it is also seeing how many other districts approve wrestling, such that there could actually be competition. I think right now at 20%, that may be a, a difficult, uh, undertaking. But also looking at whether there'd be, you know, wrestlers, you know, wrestlers would, uh, you know, take other steps to deal with potential COVID spread. I think there's a lot of, of other questions there that the sport presents. So I think if we can, uh, re, circle back to wrestling and see what we can do there. But in the meantime, proceed with the sports that we have on, on this resolution for this evening.
I, I just would like, uh, I don't have my thing on here. Just clarification, I mean, Dr. Harrison, do you, will, will you need authorization from the board for, for wrestling or not? Because I feel like I should give the flexibility to you to make that decision. Right, you know, the, the season will be over before we talk.
Yeah, if we, we can't wait for another meeting. I, I, I would, what, um, what I would like to do, we could call a special board meeting where we could get together and have a quorum of the board, seven-thirty-one morning or seven-thirty-one night to, to have it approved. I, you know, I certainly would want on public record and at least put on record what the plan is, if there is an accommodation that would permit wrestling to go forth.
Uh, yeah, thank you.
I just have one more question I forgot, I didn't get a chance to ask. How will having, um, you know, if this vote proceeds and we do have football in the, in the, what amounts to March and April, I'm presuming, how does that impact field usage for spring sports that are outdoors that may be?
The seasons are all staggered. Yeah, they're all modified. So we're looking at all, um, you know, just the timing of it. They're, they're designed so that there isn't much overlap, so that we'll be able to navigate it. And I know some of our community members listening that are involved in youth sports are interested in all that as well.
All right, thank you.
So, so with, uh, that modification to the language to the resolution, or I now ask for, does this have to be, is this roll call, or what is the process for?
Standard.
All right, so.
Some move to approve the resolution.
Yeah, so, uh, Mike, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jane and Erin, uh, Patricia's able to record your votes.
So, I, sorry. Do you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
No.
No.
Okay.
It's six-one.
Six-one.
Can we have a five-minute recess?
Yes, we can have a five-minute recess.
If I could thank everybody, the many folks from the community that joined us tonight, uh, for, uh, this important discussion as it relates to not only high-risk athletics, but is really a window into maybe the direction we're going, district-wide, with broader reopening or expanding student, uh, engagement opportunities. So, uh, I sincerely thank you for joining us tonight. After this five-minute recess, we're going to come back and we're going to have our first budget presentation, and then we're going to talk about calendar. I promise we'll be done by about 11 o'clock, so you won't get to bed too late. So, um, we'll be back. If you want to hang on, uh, come back and join the fun. Thanks.
Thank you. Five-minute recess.
No.
Continue with more important business and this slide will be.
Where budget gets us all excited.
All righty. So good evening once again. As we had indicated at the top of the meeting tonight, we are kicking off our annual budget process. And this first budget presentation is going to focus on the, the budgetary climate, which we know is going to be very, very ugly this year and more challenging than we even saw last year with lots of question marks. But through this process, we're going to remain true to our vision and one that is student-centered, that is supporting our faculty and staff, that is providing for the health of our school district and its facilities, but always keeping an eye on our tax cap. All this work is always linked to our strategic plan, as the board is so well aware. Throughout our budgetary process, we think about everything through the lens of our six strategic objectives. And as we consider any new considerations, and Carol and I will warn you upfront, you're going to see very few this year because there isn't going to be the money available to be able to support many of them. But everything that we do is going to be linked to these strategic objectives. And when we think about this work, we're always going to have an alignment and you're going to see that. And we're going to remind you of that. And let's keep ourselves grounded in that language as we have these conversations moving forward. But we certainly recognize that there's all kinds of challenges that sit there around us. You know, when we go, obviously COVID is at the front of it all. And interwoven into that is national and statewide politics that are influencing all of this. There's tremendous state aid uncertainty that's before us. We don't know what we're exactly going to get. There's promises that have been made. We're not quite sure how it's going to materialize. There's also proposed caps on different types of aids that would definitely limit monies that would be received by our district this year and in years moving forward. Some of this speaks to the advocacy efforts that Ms. Propper referenced earlier that we're going to need to engage in as a school community. We are limited by our tax levy cap this year, when it does not really reflect the economic reality in our region. We are seeing wage growth. There's some finances that are better than is reflected in this consumer pricing index that applies to our formula. And this is an area where there are certain challenges that we need to address. We always worry about tax certs that are going to circus, surface and refunds that the district owes either businesses or residents of our community. And in doing so, that will have impacts on the budget. Changes in enrollment and student needs, and we specifically highlight special education. You never know how enrollment shifts are going to impact class size, our student programs. And this year alone, we know that we saw shifts where we had to add an additional special education teacher and an aide to be able to support needs that surfaced at a particular elementary grade, grade level. So there's always question marks that we have to be prepared to deal with. And of course, there's other contractual obligations that we have to continue to adhere to. And then lots and lots of unfunded mandates, as Ms. Gettide so astutely acknowledged earlier this evening. So Ms. Stein is going to begin to walk us through a series of financial slides. And first is the story around foundation aid. So Carol, please take it from here.
Certainly. So I always include this slide because it just shows, it shows what we're, what we've lost. Had the formula been running the way foundation aid was, the formula was, was made back in 2007 era, we would have basically received in, in that period of time, now since then, about 12 and a half million dollars of lost aid. So we really only had about a 65% average funding. And that's what that slide shows. So that's really to the detriment of the district and the taxpayer who has to then fund the difference. And we have to be creative. So it's a loss to us. And I will keep in mind that, you know, people in our region spend, basically are key contributors to, to the state income tax, and yet we're not getting our share of state aid. So that's really what I would just comment on that slide. So that kind of leads us into state aid preview. And there's a lot of question marks on this slide for a reason. And the numbers are, are small and hard to read for, for you if you're looking on the screen unless you've printed it. But there is a lot of uncertainty here. The governor has proposed doing a combined services aid. So you see where I have two columns, one where I have the governor's proposed budget and one where I have my estimation of what it would be had we, if we continue the way we've always been doing it, which I believe is, is going to end up because there is such a negative advocacy against, against this proposal. But you can see where I'm putting the different numbers. There's still a lot of uncertainty here. I'm, I'm very confused with how they're handling the pandemic aid adjustments. They're taking one off, they're adding another on and calling it a local district funding adjustment. Then they are giving you the same exact amount of money in the CARE, the CARES Act. So he's, he's taking away, he's bringing it back. There's a lot of weird accounting going on here. What really concerns me though is the star because now for the first time, the governor included star on our aid runs. And this concerns me because right now, the projection is from this year to next year that we would have a reduction star of $234,341. That number on the bottom. Does that, and we don't understand it yet. I've been on numerous calls and, and there's still a lot of uncertainty. Does that mean we're not going to get that revenue from the state if that's truly the star amount we're supposed to have? So it doesn't, from what I have understood from the most recent meetings, the taxpayer will still get their credit, but the state will not remit it to the school district. So that could be a funding shortfall that we have to keep our eye on. Right now, for forecasting purposes, for budgetary purposes, I am using the column on the far right, which is a three-point, just about $3.8 million state and federal aid number. It's less than the projections that the governor has, which is about 3.95 million. But I am concerned about this $234,000 loss of state star. So I really still have a lot of work to do here to figure this out prior to us making our superintendent's budget proposal and coming up with our full revenue forecast. So that's really all I'll say right now. There's, there's, um, there's a lot of uncertainty. So the next slide talks about the tax cap. And if you remember that when I presented the long-range plan in early, I think it was January, we, I was using the assumption that we would be at about CPI factor of about 1.5. And then shortly thereafter, out comes the factor of 1.23. I had been looking at an index that actually trended to 1.6 and it ended at 1.4, but I was looking at the wrong index at the time. There's a lot of different indexes that are used. And unfortunately for us, the, the really thing that might, you might want to take away on this slide is that where you, the, the state uses an index that doesn't even include wages. What is our biggest percentage of our budget is wages, you know? So it's like, this is, is a crazy index, but yet this is what we're stuck with. So we unfortunately are going to be stuck with a 1.23% CPI factor unless advocacy fails, which there is out there right now to try to make that a 2% number this year. Because of all the other things that are going on, it might, you know, there's proposals out there to allow us to go to 1.02. I don't know that it will take off. I know the governor doesn't want to change things in the formula, but this might be the year that we could succeed in something like that. The net increase with the tax levy is 1.4 million. So it is a tough year for us. Last year, we had a 2.1 million increase in the levy. In other years, we had 1.7 or 2.2 in the last couple of years. So this is going to make it tight. And, uh, you know, our general push ahead is, is always a decent amount. So this is going to make a very tight year, as Dr. Harrison just mentioned. Let's go to the next slide. Again, you can see from here that basically the, the green, the green area to the light green area, with the exception of the transportation, is really not the area we're talking about tonight, but you can see that that's the bulk of the budget. So, and then if you look at the, the, well, I'll see it in two more slides. You'll see what percentage we're talking about. Next slide, Chris? Okay, so, so this has been our budget trends from year to year. We are, been, we've been modest, you know, fairly modest increases in the, in the high two is the last two years. I anticipate, just looking at revenue this year, probably being two, 2.1, 2.2, something like that, 2.3. It's not going to be a very good year again, in terms of adding much. And I'm, I'm very concerned about revenues. We haven't really gotten all of our revenue picture solid yet, but I am concerned about it, especially some of the, the non-tax revenues. We're down, it'll be down in interest income and things like that. So it's going to be a tight year. If you go to the next slide, so we include this slide every year because, you know, again, the, but the budget is a process and we, we make lots of projections, but it's a plan. And what happens if we're, if we budget too much and we don't use it all? What hap, what, what happens to that money? I think the taxpayer likes to know that question every year. It's not lost. Okay, that money is, is given back. It's, it's put in fund balance, it's put into reserves. We, we, every year that I've been here so far, we have used some fund balance to, as a revenue source, which is, is something that you do when you do have surpluses. At some point, you, if, you know, you need to be careful how much you're using. And you know that if you've also seen my long-range plan, you, you know that I advocate for using less and less as time goes on. But it is important to do it when you've created a decent surplus and you have no other reserves to, to use. And so in tough years, that's when you might rely on fund balance to do that. We have to be careful though. We do always maintain a consistent amount of fund balance or we would be considered in fiscal stress by New York State. Right, right now, we are not. We have a good, a very good rating for fiscal stress, stress. Next slide. So the budget process is a lengthy one. It takes, you know, a good part of the year. I start thinking about it in November, really. And then I start doing calculations. We're doing analysis basically from November on, I'm looking at where we are. And we meet with all of our administrators, facilities, people meet with, with all the principals and head custodians. So there's a lot of work that's going on. It was hot in the scenes. But we're also waiting for information throughout this process. So I know some school districts like to jump the gun and, and do this really early. It's too early and you, and you've made a lot of assumptions that you end up having to change numbers on. So not, not such a great, you know, great idea, but we, we still have to do the work because it takes a while to get it all put together. And as you know, every year, we, we are looking to make sure we have a solid plan that maintains a sustainable future and provides, you know, provides for the program that we want in, in the schools districts that, you know, to maintain the program and enhancing our program.
So Carol, Cal, if I may interject, it's something for the board. When we look at this calendar and all the uncertainty that exists, we may entertain proposing to the board that we shift this calendar a little bit. So we have to look at when we have to adopt the budget. We may be able to push all this back about a week to be able to buy us more time to have, make wiser decisions. Because the concern that I have, especially as we go into the curriculum budget in two weeks, that we're going to make hasty decisions based upon concerns around limited funding and financing. And if we're able to push the sequence of these meetings back one week, one meeting, and then potentially add another meeting on maybe April 20th, we would have a later approval date, still providing the discussion times, we may be in a position where we're having smarter conversations because we'll have more information before us. So Carol and I flirted with the idea of some adjustments today, and we'll bring that back to board leadership to discuss later in the week.
Yeah, there's a lot still that, that we need to calculate. And it was a little bit later last year. I, I do remember we didn't make the second presentation until early March, which is probably, you know, why maybe I'm feeling that little bit of stress right now. But let's head into the operations and finance budget and go to the next slide. Again, this is strategic objective number six, to ensure the fiscal health of the district. And we need to ensure that what we're doing is going to prepare account for our facilities, our debt needs, everything else. And then also make sure that whatever we have in, in our system is, is maintaining our infrastructure. Next slide. So the areas that this covers, and I, I really won't read this list because it's here for you to read, but it's, it's basically the first seven bullet points are, are considered what we call general support. And then the last three are their own. And then the last three are their own budget codes, transportation, debt service, and transfer to other funds. Those are all set by the state, these names. We don't really make them up. It's it's basically the same accounting manual that's been in effect for forever. Sometimes you're going to see throughout this presentation and also the one for curriculum, in whenever we do that, is that I sometimes I need to change things where where they're coded. We're learning a lot with ESSA and with the National, the New York State Transparency Report about how things are supposed to be coded. And sometimes, you know, we do, I've tried to keep things coded the way we've had in the past just so that you're comparing apples to apples, but sometimes you do need to make some changes. And you'll see a couple of them tonight, and you'll see a couple more in one next, in the next presentation. And that's just so that we're not being unfavorably compared to wherever we're going to be compared to. So as we see different things that we're supposed to do. Okay. Next slide. So again, this part of the budget is about twenty-two to twenty-three percent of the budget versus the four that we're going to be considered as instructional. That's going to come next. So without any, you know, again, without any new initiatives, those, Dr. Harrison was mentioning all the different variances that occur in in this particular area, we have variances for salaries, contractual salary increases, we have, we'll have facility changes, and I'll talk more about that specifically. BOCs, we are a component, a member of the of the BOCs as a component member. And so we have to pay the cost of the administration, a portion of that. That always increases every year. They have no longer the ability to create reserves to offset their retiree help, and that gets part of the administrative cost that's in this budget. The actual services that we in that we purchase from BOCs, those are are spread throughout the budget in terms of the each code, but this is the actual administrative portion that we have to cover. We're going to talk a little bit, a lot about technology tonight. We've had some changes in that area. We won't be getting to special education tonight, but that will be a factor in our in our variances. There's some minor insurance changes. Transportation, we will talk about, and debt service, we'll talk about tonight. So as Dr. Harrison mentioned, we don't have much new considerations. But in thinking ahead to the future, and if if we want to reopen with one-hundred percent of the students in place, we're trying to start thinking about some of the things we might need that would we would have to have in order to do that. And one of them is what we saw, talked about tonight, which was the desk separators or desk dividers. So I'm starting to price those out. It's possible we still could buy those this year. And then we would not need to do that next year. We're trying to take a look at, you know, where we are again this year and also what the need would be for these. But I was actually, had I been there tonight, would have had an example of one on my on my desk to show you, but I ended up having more snow than you all did, so. I didn't, and didn't come in, but that's one of the costs that we're entertaining as a as a new consideration at the moment. The second one is the facilities, a pickup truck. We are in dire need of this truck. I know you've heard me say this for the last two years. We've actually had a truck breakdown on Monday, and, you know, it jeopardizes our ability to remove snow to create, you know, we use trucks trucks for snow, but we use them all throughout the year. We use them to move landscape equipment around. We use them to move tables from school to school for events. There's a lot of different things we use our trucks for. They they get very much use. And we we are absolutely in in need of that. I almost consider just putting in the push ahead budget and telling you that we had no choice, but I didn't do that because of the size, the amount of the purchase, but it is is that dire need at this point.
Yeah, and I would say this final truck, this truck being referenced here that we need to replace has essentially broken down with the last two snowfalls, and thank you to the Irving, Village of Irvington that has come and salted our parking lots and the roads for us. Because without them stepping up, we would have had some hazardous conditions. With the big snowstorm, it broke down. And then it actually, a component on the truck actually caught fire with the the most recent snowfall. So we need to replace this. This is our salt spreader. It's used as a utility vehicle throughout the course of the year. But this essentially, we're going to have to tell you is a non-negotiable that we have to purchase another truck.
Okay, so now I I basically I'll present the the different areas. Some of them I combine just to, you know, make this go a little bit quicker. Again, the detail of what I'm presenting, there is a sheet that companies has has more detail, more line item details in terms of the breakout of what included in each of these areas, including salaries, supplies, contractual BOCs. So all that is in the detail. I I just find it, it would be very tiny on the screen if I were to show all that at this point, so I give the summary here. But in this, in this particular area, there's not much to discuss. It's an increase of sixty-five-hundred dollars in total for these four function codes. So really, nothing major changing going on here. Next slide. So within the proposed finance budget, you'll see one of our minor changes. I have recoded where the emergency alert service gets coded from finance to public information. That's one change. The other variance that you'll see here is in BOCs, we are now using an E-rate consultant to get better E-rate services. E-rate has been a success story for us in the last year or so. This year, over the next five years, we'll be eligible for up to one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars worth of rebate money reimbursements. So we're eligible for a sense for three-hundred-thousand dollars of technology spending, and then we would get about forty percent back. So, but it's a very complicated process, and you generally need the help of a consultant to do that. So I think the small amount of money we spend with the consultant to get one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars back is a is a good bargain first, and you'll see some of that in the revenue, the money back. But it's also gotten much more complicated because now they've added different categories. No longer is it just the telephone bill you send in, and they give you money back. You have to, you have to bid out. You have to create bids for these things for the category two, which is like the switches, access point networks, all the network infrastructure. So it's gotten more complicated. And that's the one increase you'll see under the BOCs and financial software. It's not just all financial software, but it's the primary piece of BOCs there. Next slide. And in the next slide, the the other key change here that you see is the public information, and this is a combination of factors. One is the recoding of that emergency alert system, which belonged in this code instead of in the business code. We've added these Zoom subscription, and we've participated in a technology equity survey company that's doing that, helping us do that. So those are costs that we anticipate continuing. And and also, this year, we had taken the twenty-thousand dollars out for the survey that we, the annual survey that we're doing. But because we were able to carry over the expense from nineteen-twenty that we didn't use, and so that helped us balance the budget last year. But whenever you do those one-time things, you end up having to put it back in the following year. And so now we're paying the paper on that one, and that twenty-thousand dollars is in there for the survey for twenty-one, twenty-two. We still plan to do the survey in twenty-twenty-one, but we will be using nineteen-twenty money for that. So that is.
I would say a good reminder to the Communications Committee that we have to start thinking about that and what our strategy is, that we have a survey that we developed last year that's in the bank or a new survey that we can contemplate developing that can collect information on different types of experiences. So we need to ensure that that's in our tickler to take advantage of that opportunity to collect and have data analyzed from our school community.
Okay, next slide. So the facilities budget, I briefly mentioned before, we start this budget in in some of the areas with zero. So basically, there are some areas like equipment and building, repair, and improvement where I basically start with scratch and say, okay, what what are we going to do? Gary, our director of facilities, Gary Knowles, meets with the head custodians, and he meets with all the school administrators to kind of come up with their wish list and and what their needs are. Sometimes it's it's urgent needs, and sometimes it can be done a little later. So we look at them all. We start to prioritize them. We try to figure out how much we can can fund in that year that's similar to a funding level from the previous year. Some things we we can't get to, but we keep them on the list. And so after them being on the list for several years, and the principals and the head custodians are asking for the same thing, that's usually when it becomes a higher priority. I wish we could do it all every year, but that's not life. So so I will talk about some of the specifics there. If you go to the next slide. So here you see the 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 various variances. On the equipment line, you're seeing the cost of the truck put put in there. The only other piece of equipment budgeted is a riding lawnmower that we also do need. And I would wish I could tell you that we were doing an electric one there, but it's not really doable yet. It's getting closer. And we are looking at electric wherever we can. We've invested in electric leaf blowers and other equipment, but a riding lawnmower yet is out of our price range to go electric at at this point. Something to continue to do. Nothing else stands out. Supplies stands out because we put the new ask for the PPE, I mean, for the desk barriers in that code as well. Otherwise, that would not be, that would be a small percentage increase. The only other piece that's also in supplies, that's that's, in a sense, it's push ahead, but it really hadn't been budgeted, is that we're purchasing, we've made an investment, and I think we should continue. I will continue to recommend us using that product called BioProtect. We feel it's helping. I think it'll help during normal flu season, strep throat season. It generally has been effective, considered effective with all those contaminants to to keep kids safe. So I think it's something we want to use. It has a shelf, a a a life of like sixty to ninety days on a surface to prevent a virus from adhering to that surface. So I want to continue doing that, but it's about twenty-thousand dollars in that in investment to do that for a year's worth of supply.
Yeah, and Carol, I would just say that also in referencing a new ride-on lawnmower, where there certainly, the cost is is not achievable for us at this point in time because there's so much more expensive than a traditional gas-powered mower. We're not able to use them with the various attachments. So you couldn't have an electric mower that you could plow snow with or put on the other leaf mulching attachments and the like that we currently use with the gas-powered equipment. So hopefully that technology will catch up so we could make that transition in the future.
So in the in the budget on the preceding page is the building repairs and maintenance projects that we like to consider every year. This year, we have to focus on some playground equipment. We have, we have to inspections. Inspections reveal needs, so we are going to budget for some of those playground equipment repairs. Obviously, anything that's really urgent is taken care of upon inspection, but some of the things are are just replacements of different parts of the playground that that need work. We have a water heater at Dow's that needs to be replaced. There's some exterior doors at Main Street School toward the back that they go out from the lowest level into the parking lot that needs to be replaced. We are looking to replace the cafeteria floor at the Main Street School. It's in pretty bad shape. I know that Joyce also wanted the auditorium floor to be done, but that's going to have to wait. It's just too much at this point. The middle school, we're looking at replacing the ceiling fans in the lobby. John has asked us to do some additional striping on the floors to support the PE program in the the campus gym and the mar gym. And also, there's some bleacher. This is the indoor bleachers of the gym's repair that needs to occur. We have always a need for more outlets and expanding our electricity capacity at the, especially at the high school, but I I that might actually cover some other schools as well. And the middle school and CMS building, the PA system has had some operational issues, so we definitely need to work on some upgrades there. And then finally, we're going to look to replace the fence around Ollie Track. We originally had hoped to do that with the first capital project. But we kept the similar fence and just, I think, put a replacement chain. But with all the changes now with the new building and the new bleachers, I think it's time to put a new fence up. And then there's several painting projects that occur in the summer for all schools. Going on to technology. So technology, you see a fairly decent size increase, and I'll make two comments. One, one is that, you know, we've invested a lot this year in technology, in being able to support remote learning and also our infrastructure in in the network. This particular part of the budget is not the instructional technology. It's the network that supports that. It supports all the offices. It supports the the internet. It supports the the switches, the access point. So it's partially, obviously, going for the instructional technology, but it's considered the network portion. We added a secondary internet provider this year. We needed to do that anyway, you know, to to have a backup. We we basically can't afford to have the internet go down on us anymore. It's just too critical for us to have, you know, if all teeth, my mouth goes down, not to have a backup, and then us just sitting there doing nothing. It's it's just too critical right now. The, we've also added different cybersecurity detection, network filtering, and other security. That's all in our budget push ahead. So this is basically all push ahead variance. I would almost try to say that's new, but it's it was really all new this year. And so, and we, these are all things we're doing. We're adding, we've added a class link, and we've added, we're currently in the process of adding an enrollment module to automate the registration process. And there's also increased privacy protection. So that's where all in BOCs. There's a lot of, there's a lot going on. I will tell you that some of this will be in the revenue budget that we will get some E-rate revenue. So as I mentioned that before, when I was talking about the consultant, we are going to get some, a little bit of this back in E-rate. There's a lag in E-rate, so it's not always easy to predict which year you're going to get the the funding, but we'll make, we make some assumptions on when we think we'll get that in. Next slide. The special items is just the the remaining few things that don't have any place to go. Our main insurance policy, we have sewer, we we lower except from every other tax. We're not exempt from sewer taxes. So the refund for the property tax, obviously seventy-five-thousand dollars does not cut cut it, but it's an attempt to keep starting to put money aside and not have to rely completely on our reserve for that. If we are hit with a ton of of tax shirts, we obviously we use our reserve, and then if we are hit with a ton more than then, we have reserves where we end up having to borrow. I think we're in a good place right now with our reserve to be able to pay on an annual basis, but we have to keep monitoring that, as I talked about when I did the long-range plan. And then finally, I already kind of mentioned the the BOCs admin capital charges. That's that's for the, it's really mostly for the the post-employment benefits for the for BOCs workers and covering their administration piece of BOCs. The rest gets charged by the program that you purchase. Next slide. Transportation, you'll, this is an odd slide for me this year that I'm not, I'm not showing you how much of an increase I want to include. I I believe that we budgeted extra in two thousand, twenty, twenty-one, not knowing what was going to happen with our contract. So I had put in extra this this year, and we'll have a positive variance this year, talking about fund balance where I say, you know, we we would have, what happens if you don't spend it? It goes to fund balance. This year, I will probably, we've already made some budget transfers to fund a lot of the COVID's purchase, COVID supplies we've been purchasing and other costs we had. So some of that that savings will have already been used, but the rest would go to fund balance. But that means that I don't need to really increase next year's budget. Okay, so I'm not recommending us to do that. There's a small increase in our transportation coordination cost. And we are budgeting for a little bit more for field trips. We've, we have found that the money that we had been budgeting for the field trips that we traditionally have taken out, obviously not this year, the costs have gone up for those kind of coach buses and things that we do the longer trips. So that's the only increase that I would be recommending this coming year. I think that'll be the only time I ever say that. So. Next, next slide. Finally, we have our debt service. Debt service is kind of a fixed number. Once you make go to a bond, you know your schedule for the next fifteen or twenty years, so you can easily predict this. The one thing we really totally can't predict is is the cost of a ban, which is going to be a bit on anticipation note that I will be engaging with. We currently have one right now, and we have, was small, and we'll be doing a refinance of that ban and and an increase in the amount come June to fund the second part of the, to fund the summer part of the construction. And but the good news here is that rates have really gone down. So when I budgeted the ban last year, I budgeted one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and it was a for, I think, for a smaller bond ban that I'm going to go for this year, and I'm only budgeting sixty thousand. So rates have really gone down. And that is going to help us with the debt service. So that's a positive variance right there. Interfund transfers to special aid, I just want to make one comment about that before you go off that slide. That's a little bit of a risk to us. We might be needing to run a a summer pro, a summer program or have more kids' ten summer programs. So this could be a risk here. I did increase it a little bit, but we might need to think about that as that number going up a little bit more. And we're not playing, planning on making any transfers to the capital fund at the moment.
So and Carol, just as you mentioned, running the summer program, where you could think of running a so, summer program for special education would be very expensive because of staffing, transportation aids that would be involved. But if you run a summer program, it is eighty percent aidable. So a large percentage of that money would would be reduced with the state picking up the tab for that.
Right, assuming it's 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 for students with disabilities.
Yep.
And so when you put it all together, I know this is a lot of numbers I want to slide, but when you put it all together, the push ahead alone is is only about one-point-three percent increase because you see some pluses and minuses throughout there. And then when you add in the the two new considerations, it ends up being about a two percent increase. And that's probably going to be our target throughout this this presentation, you know, throughout this year. It may not even be that high. It's hard to say until I see the the full revenue picture, but that's that's basically it in a nutshell. I know I kind of went fast, but the detail is in the accompanying document. the accompanying documents for anyone who's, who's likes to really digest that. And, and that's there. I'll let Chris kind of finish this up with the, the last talk about the future meetings. I think we already touched on that, really.
Yeah, I would say I think the slide speaks for itself. Certainly, everything's aligned with what our focus in is throughout the district, aligned with the strategic plan, but notably aligned with our reality. We're facing difficult times. We're investing the little bit of money we have where we need to, and our focus is going to be maintaining the quality operation, the quality program that we have today, and striking a balanced budget at the end of the process. Obviously, we have a bunch of meetings on the horizon. The one to keep our eye on, obviously, is May 18th with a budget vote. We know that the, there's some uncertainty around how elections will be facilitated this year, so more to come on that front. And as I referenced earlier, we're contemplating revising our timeline a little bit to ensure that Carol has some better numbers to inform our planning and to enrich the thinking throughout our process. So more to come with those recommendations in the coming days.
Thank you for giving us that lens into where we're going on, on the budget. I don't know if there are particular trustee questions now on this. We, you know, we can also obviously digest this form and come back with questions as well as we have the future presentations and as we develop the schedule. But if someone has a particular question now, I don't want that to be foreclosed, but there'll certainly be other opportunities to discuss this in the coming meetings. Yeah.
Point of clarification. So when we were talking about summer school being expense aidable, just so I understand this, is that the expense aid that we're worried about?
No.
Okay, it's a totally different line item.
Totally different line. Yes, it's not combining the.
Just needed to know that.
Yes, no, it's a very good question.
It's actually accounted for, Beth, in the special aid fund and not even in the general fund. So we have to trend, the transfer that you see in the general fund is the 20% portion that the district is responsible for. And then the 80% is, the whole thing, expense is actually recorded in the special aid fund. So that's why you see a fund transfer.
Chris knows where, no, I was just asking because there was a legislative, there was an executive budget issue involving consolidating certain expense aids. And I was wondering if this was one that was under.
No, no, we're fortunate that it's not.
So that's all. So thank you.
Functional material aid, reorganization aid, transportation aid, those are the ones that would hit us the most in that, in that services aid. And I'm totally not in favor of doing that.
Okay.
Erin, I think you had a question.
Yeah, just a quick one. Carol, remind me when we're getting new bleachers as part of our bonds program, because I saw we have some repairs and maintenance to do to them, and it just seems.
Erin, different bleachers. Those are the interior bleachers versus the exterior bleachers.
Thank you for that clarification.
So unless someone else had a question or clarification, I would suggest we move on to the calendar at this point. And thank you both, Ms. Stein and Dr. Harrison, for that. But obviously, this is part of a much larger conversation that we'll be having. So now on to calendar.
All righty. So this time each year, we always come forward to talk about our calendar. And I think complicated is going to be the theme that's going to weave through this entire school year, because not only is everything that we've done been very complicated, this coming year's calendar is really challenging. We know that we start off with a late Labor Day to begin with, but in doing so, it provides some opportunity because we're going to be able to maximize the summer months and with a few extra days to be able to fit construction into our projects. Mainly, as discussed up here at the campus and at Dow's Lane, seriously looking at maximizing learning, establishing those long blocks of instructional time with fewer interruptions. We accommodate all of the SED requirements for a number of instructional days, number instructional hours. And we've built this vacation calendar in and around the anticipated state testing calendar for the coming school year. We keep in mind all the contractual obligations that we have, federal and religious holidays. And I want to throw an asterisk on that one because there's a new holiday that we are going to be recognizing for the first time this year that affects our calendar. We try to align with BOSI's and neighboring school districts as much as possible, and the calendar provides for four snow days. So when we think about a little bit of an overview of this calendar, no, there's lots of challenges where the holidays fall, and you want to have to really look at the calendar to see specifically how everything affects us here. So we have Labor Day falling on the 6th, but we have the first student day being delayed until the 9th because of holidays that immediately follow. So then when we think about where the school year ends, we know that it is looking at a final day that's established by the State Education Department, which is referred to as rating day. So we have to look at having our 180 days, the appropriate number of hours with all, recognizing all the holidays, essentially between those bookends of looking at the 9th of September and the 24th of June, to highlight that we're seeing that the December break, the holiday recess would be looking full-fledged, the 24th to January 3rd. And then you can see the dates for winter break, spring break. Notably, spring break is challenging this year because of the complexities with the calendar. Some school districts have considered wrapping it around a weekend, rather doing a traditional week. But internally, we've decided that it was important to look at having one solid week so to not have two broken weeks. So we have spring break here, Memorial Day being a single day off. And here is the first time that we are having a closure for Juneteenth, which is now recognized as a state holiday. Juneteenth is the 19th of June. When it falls on a weekday or on a Sunday, we have to give the, the day off. So it falls on a Sunday, which bumps it to Monday, June 20th. So the last week of school, that Monday, we will be closed for all operations based upon state law. Our last student day is June 23rd, and you can see we've built in the valued days for professional development. As we look at an overview of the calendar, you can certainly see how that later start really impacts us. We met with, on two occasions, our construction manager and our architects regarding looking at that first week in September, seeing if we could have our superintendent's conference days, August 31st, and the 1st, and then possibly have students come in on the 2nd and 3rd of September. But our construction contracts really try to take advantage of all of the summertime that is available to us and that they are performance-based and that we need to, they need to complete their work by August 31st. So when we're thinking about all the cleanup that's going to happen around that construction, they have advised us to keep students off the campuses until the following week. So you can see how we get that late push and having Labor Day on the 6th followed by Rosh Hashanah, and then students returning on the 9th. And then we look to the following week, we have Yan Kapoor as well. So you can see, we really have a lot of impact here in September, which will make it difficult to get going. But we have that traditional longer run in October. Looking at November, again, having our superintendent's conference day in November, on Election Day. I think from a safety and security standpoint, it is a responsible measure for us to continue to follow. And you can see how the other days fall out, and it's as basic as it possibly comes. We've highlighted the PLRD days as we have in the past, certainly not as complicated as they have been in some other years. I, I think when we take a look at the Flex Wednesdays and the numerous presentations that Ms. Ellis has highlighted, the work that has occurred during the Flex Wednesdays, and as I'm sure you will see when we have our instructional coaches join us for a presentation and workshop in June, the tremendous value that we've seen in those days and how that will enable us to have even more effective learning and collaboration on those PLRD days throughout the course of the school year. So that's really in a nutshell. You know, we certainly will be glad to answer any questions that you may have. But it's a tough calendar. It's pretty bare bones in what it offers. And without any significant changes or feedback, we'd be looking for the adoption on March 9.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Any questions?
You answered my question right at the end there.
So there we go.
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, can we possibly change the observance, observance of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is that something we'd be open to doing in light of, you know, sort of current events and how this day is viewed by Native Americans?
I'm stopping sharing so I can see. So certain districts have taken the choice to do that. In the state of New York, I would say that our governor has been very direct in stating that he's not changing the name of a holiday, I think in recognition of his Italian heritage. But if there, you know, Columbus Day is a day that's named contractually in contract. So I think if the board elected to identify the day differently on the calendar, it would be in the spirit of the compliance that we have with contractual obligations.
Exactly.
What was that?
It's, it's not an easy process necessarily to change the day. It is named specifically in contracts as certain employee groups having Columbus Day off.
Maybe we could combine.
I'm open to the feedback from the board on this front.
Yeah, I don't have, I think if we could do something that is not going to be operationally complex, I'm, you know, I'm fine with exploring a change. But Chris, why don't you, you know, take away and look at what it would involve? Because if we have to go back and start changing our contracts and deal with things, I don't want this to turn to something that's more involved.
I will add, and, you know, I'm all for exploring it for sure, obviously, you know, a big topic, but I think it's one that is, needs to reach a broader piece of the community. It needs to involve many, many different people.
But this way, we have our first discussion.
Yeah, happy to have you.
Yeah.
Make sure that everybody's included, all voices, all sides of the fence on it.
All right, thank you. So now we have our consent agenda. Are there questions on the consent agenda?
I have a question just about reserves, but I think I'll save it for a later time when we're talking budgets.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Dr. Harrison, on to you for your usual discussion.
I'm enjoying that somehow the hard copy of the agenda, I have half of the pages are upside down.
Ooh.
I have to turn partway through, so it's fun. I'm good, I'm good, thank you. But certainly, I want to acknowledge the, the hard work of, you know, John and Hannah in supporting the athletic program and tonight's presentation, and thank the board for their focus and attention to that important matter related to high-risk athletics. You know, we have a significant retirement on the agenda this evening, and I want to thank and congratulate Jerry Winteroth, who has been a valued member of our school community for many years, having been an amazing science teacher, one of the individuals at the heart of the incredible success of our science research program, her involvement in the music program. We certainly will sorely miss Jerry and wish her well in all of her future endeavors. Some appointment of a long-term replacement and looking at John Kilgaski, that will be continuing to fill in this Winteroth's role. So congratulations to John. We do have some staff shifts and some folks flipping from categories, from looking at folks that are working as a building sub, looking at appointment of a probationary teacher aide. And you can see the transition there from one category to another, which of course has some domino effect. And looking at Rebecca Behar, we're going to have Rebecca stay on a little bit longer. So we're glad to have Rebecca continue in the role, as was referenced earlier, and the growth in needs in serving our students with disabilities. We have a resignation of a coach, appointment of a coach. I do want to acknowledge that, that Caitlin Dagnan, who is now going to be our junior varsity head girls' basketball coach, is an alum, and it's thrilling to have her back in our coaching ranks. An amazing individual that I met a couple of years ago and thrilled to welcome back to the Irvington school community in another capacity.
From an illustrious family in the region when it comes to athletics.
Without a question. And some other routine contracts and authorizations, as are spoken for pretty clearly in the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So this is our final community comment period. If there's anyone who is still with us and had a comment or question, you can put your name and address in Q and A in Zoom and you'll be recognized. But as we wait to see if there is anyone who is still looking to make a comment, I'll say that our next public meeting is here on February 23rd at 7:30, both here in person and also facilitated via Zoom. So seeing no other community comments, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I will move to adjourn tonight's meeting, but I also wanted to say thank you. I think you referenced this to our staff for clearing out the campuses over the last two weeks. So much snow.
Yeah. And we did not mention it, but tremendous hard work. Our, our custodial maintenance team is, is the best. They've been working hard and, as you can imagine, are exhausted from all that hard work. So thank you for taking the time to acknowledge that.
That was a long motion.
So.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Take good care, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.